Got it. Excellent. Welcome, everybody, to today's regular council meeting for Monday, January 25th, 2021. A little blustery cold day out there today, so hopefully everybody is keeping warm and driving safe and all that fun stuff. So I'll call today's meeting to order, and I'll ask for any added items to the agenda. Counselor Overwater.
Thank you, worship. Yes, I would like to add the Alberta Association of Police Governance Conference, April 23rd to the 24th. I'm not sure when you want to put that in there.
Well, let's put that in as 6D for new business. All right, anything else? I do have an added item as well. I'd like to talk about the mayors of Southern, South Central Alberta. A new mayoral caucus that is starting up here in central Alberta, so I'll put that on as 6E. Anybody else? Yes, Mr. Merritt.
Yes, Director Andrew is not going to be available, at least for the first part of this meeting. He had to go out and deal with a fire in his capacity as fire chief.
All right, did we need to move the emergency management? Update down? No? Okay, enough. He's just doing his day job, which is good. All righty, may I have a motion for today's agenda, please? Counselor Blatts.
Thank you, worship. I move that we accept the addenda for the regular council meeting of Monday, January 25th, 2021, as amended.
Excellent. Thank you. Comments, questions, concerns? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor? Opposed? That motion carries. All right, let's keep moving along. We have two sets of meeting minutes to adopt. May I have a motion for the first set? Counselor Bennett.
Thank you, worship. I move that the minutes from the January 11th, 2021, regular council meeting be adopted as presented.
Excellent. Thank you. Comments, questions, concerns, arrows, omissions? Yes, Counselor Harper.
Yes, thank you very much, your worship, through you to our administration on page, I believe, five of our agenda. Item five, bylaws, where the motion to have unanimous consent for a presentation of third reading, even though there is six people in favor of the motion and one against, it indicates the motion was defeated. Is that how it should have read, or it should have been read unanimous consent was not achieved?
Legislative Clerk. There, Mercy. She seems, oh, there we go.
Hello, can you hear me?
There we are, yes, we can.
Hi, sorry, it's kind of windy out here. Anyway, yes, it looks like I have mixed that up. It should, it should speak to six being, well, no, 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 my apologies. That's correct. You have to have unanimous consent.
So is motion defeated the proper verbiage, or should it be motion or unanimous consent not achieved?
If, if, may, your honor.
Next up, yes.
You know, if unanimous consent is not met, a motion is defeated.
Okay, thank you.
Excellent. Thank you for the clarification, Counselor Harper and Legislative Clerk. Any other questions, comments, concerns with regards to this set of minutes? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor? And opposed? And that motion is carried as well. All right, let's move along to the special meeting. Who would like to make that motion? Counselor Ryan.
I think, your worship, I moved that the minutes from the special meeting from January 13th, 2021 be adopted.
Excellent. Comments, questions, concerns regarding that set of minutes? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? And opposed? And that motion is carried as well. All right. Let us continue along to presentations and delegations. Item 3A, CAO.
Thank you, your worship. I'll have Jennifer Lutz, the Deputy Director of Emergency Management, give us an update on COVID-19. So Jennifer, I believe you are online someplace here, so.
Hello, thanks. Good afternoon, everybody. So we've had a pretty good week managing COVID, not a lot of changes, and a lot of the changes are good news. Just going over the COVID case data, there were some questions at the last council meeting on our geographic area. So did a little outline, we are the small rectangle on top of the red rectangle, which is the population of about 12,452. That is differing from our statistical data because the location that AHS reports on is based on Alberta healthcare postal codes. So that's the postal code area, which includes Olds and a little bit of the area to the north. So if you're ever confused about Olds data versus Mountain View data, really, that's not a reflection of either. It's not Mountain View data or Olds, but those postal code regions. And that follows the fire services map. You had asked to have the data split out, so we did a bit of tracking. And today's case data numbers for Olds is 12 active cases, so that's an improvement over, we reached 39. So that was a concern, but back down to 12, and that's got to be due to the efforts of people following health restrictions. We were hoping that some more restrictions might be lifted last Friday, but that didn't happen, and people are still hunkering down and staying safe, and it's reflective of the numbers. So happy to see that. So our main duties are, again, just monitoring and oversight. We've been trying to get as much staff into the ICP as possible and getting them training for emergency management. You know, this is a slow-moving emergency or disaster, so it's a great opportunity to train people and get everybody very comfortable with emergency management. So we have a lot of position fields. It's not taking a lot of day-to-day work time, but they are learning the system, which is good. So our safety officer, there's basically no COVID-related impacts on staffing levels right now. Communication has been updating our website, social media. There were quite a few announcements on new provincial grants. So that was updated and put out on social media. And again, just making sure people are aware of the complaint matrix going to Alberta Health, and then the municipality backing that up if needed. We'll talk about municipal enforcement a little bit later. So again, a lot of communication weekly with our partners, just to keep everybody in the loop and have good communication. That's still ongoing. Now municipal enforcement turned to a seven-day work schedule to support the community. They had one complaint in the past week. They'll let them play protest. Protest was held outside of the MLA's office. One complaint was issued but rescinded, and that was a peaceful protest, so supported that. Emergency Services, they have been working with local motels to ensure that we have accommodations set up with the province of Albertans. If needing help to self-isolate, can call 211 and get some assistance if they are unable to self-isolate in their own homes, so working with our local businesses on that. Public Works is the same, the creation for this. And Doug, did you want to add a little bit on what the protocol is for reopening?
I can at this point. So with the Aquatic Center, we'll be opening seven to 10 days following an announcement from the province that will give us the time needed to recall staff that were laid off as casual staff to operate the Aquatic Center on a regular basis. So that means if it's later in the week, it won't be the following Monday. It'll be one week from the following Monday that we would reopen. The record, the sportsplex, the arena complex will be able to be reopened within three days' notice. It's just a matter of redeploying the staff back into the, back into the sportsplex in order to open up its daily operations.
Thanks, Doug. And on a unrelated note, but related to me, Curling Club shut their facility down for the rest of the season, and I think a lot of local sporting venues are making hard decisions like that, just with no provincial updates. Fire is status quo. The recovery efforts, Larry's been doing a lot of work within the Secretariat to provide information for businesses and doing a little bit on the radio on that to get information out. Logistics has been good and status quo. The finance admin, as you can see, they're continuing to explore programs to support local residents and businesses, and I think Sheena will update that at a later time. So with that, if there's any questions?
Thank you very much, Mrs. Lutz. And thank you again, once, once more time, to everybody in the residents of Olds and area. It's, it's fantastic to see these numbers plummeting like they are. And I know everybody's a little stir-crazy and everybody's a little housebound, but your efforts are not going unnoticed in our statistics, so it's, it's good to see our area down to the numbers that we're at. Any, may I start with a motion to begin with, to accept for information, and any questions for Mrs. Lutz? Counselor Blatts. Sorry, after that presentation, everybody moved on my screen.
I'm still in the same position I was when we started, but I move that council accept the emergency management's agencies' presentation on COVID-19 for information.
Excellent. Questions, comments, concerns? Yes, Counselor Harper, then Ryan? Mute, you're on mute, Counselor Harper.
Still on mute. Trying to get there. Thank you very much. Just in reference to the ICP. So is there discussion when the ICP would be stood down, like if our cases go below 10 or less? Would the ICP stand down? That question is to CAO Merritt?
Not likely, just because it went down, because if it goes below the 11 mark or 10 mark, we are still basically in the same zone for 30 more days, so. And we had started the ICP when the numbers were starting to go from three or four to five, six, seven, eight. So we just want to be on top of things because things were happening in regards to some of our network partners, whether it's the seniors, housing, or whatever, and it was very important that we be on top of anything. As Jennifer had indicated, that if people need assistance in regards to self-isolating and they're on their own and they can't basically self-isolate on their own, we're, we're open to basically do that networking and making sure that they get the appropriate information, as well as businesses are still being impacted by this whole pandemic and the closures or perk closures. And again, it's much easier to coordinate a response, having Mr. Wright being involved with the ICP and allowing that to happen. So no, if our numbers do dip, we'll still likely be having the ICP, there'll be a full discussion between the emergency management team, the senior Brian, Jennifer, and Scott, as well as myself and my second team as well.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Counselor Ryan.
Thank you, worship. I was wondering if we had any information put together. Perhaps Director Lindeman can speak to this with regards to what I had raised last time when we had our presentation of the ICP with regards to the development purposes and waiving of those of the condo costs that would be involved in doing that.
Yes, so I have put some things together, and I'll be bringing that to PMP next week.
Excellent, thank you.
All righty, any other questions, comments? I guess Counselor Thompson.
Yes, worship, I'm curious. Ddim, Lutz mentioned a user group that was likely not going to be as active for the rest of their season. I am wondering what other groups are doing in our sportsplex? And if we're seeing others follow suit, their director, Wagstaff, I'm wondering if there's any decisions we need to make?
There's going to be. At this point in time, the date looks like the middle of February. We have been in contact with the user groups that utilize the sportsplex, and they're in a holding pattern at this point. They're not yet to a point where they want to cancel any development portion. So within the next two weeks is a crucial period on that decision point for those user groups, and that also impacts the dry surface user groups. We've been in contact with, with those users, and they also are in some uncertainty at this point, so we are continually having those conversations with them just to be able to judge where they're at in their expectations of use.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Overwater.
Thank you, worship. I guess this is probably more towards Mr. Wagstaff. These user group people, whether it's minor hockey or, you know, coming up lacrosse or whatever, have they discussed about what percentages they will be returning back to the participants on their registration fee? Or is that something that you're privy to? I'm, I'm just wondering, because I know different people are talking about it, and just wondering.
They haven't disclosed, and we haven't asked. Again, that wouldn't be a relationship, is the town providing the facility that we would engage in between, you know, their membership and their fees? But to our knowledge, there hasn't been any discussion shared with us with that effect.
Excellent. All righty, anybody else with a question, comment? Yes, Counselor Ryan.
Thank you. I just have a question for Director Lindeman with regards to our facilities, then. We've been looking at receiving somebody, or sorry, receiving an idea of how much losses we're looking at in, in fees because of the closures. We'll be getting an update at all on those figures?
Yes, just as I did in 2020. I'll provide updates as we go along, probably. I would say March, PMP would be the first update for that.
Thank you.
Excellent. Counselor Thompson.
Worship, question to, potentially to Mr. Wright, if he has it. The province had talked to different groups about the enormous impact on business that these closures have had and may continue to have. I'm wondering if we have any data to, that we can compare? So to know whether or not we're losing business? For example, are occupancy rates in the town, are business locations being used as that changed over the last seven months? Are we tracking this kind of data?
Good afternoon. We are trying to track storefronts in different businesses. We're walking and talking, and we provided detailed listings to our business community through our websites and through our coordination efforts with all businesses. We don't have detailed information right now, and we are using our Secretariat to obtain as much information as possible. Hopefully, that's helpful. We had provided a detailed list to Jennifer on unique business programs and support mechanisms. Jennifer, I don't know if you have any additional comments on that?
No, we try and use the major links because information's changing all the time, so we funnel people through the province and through the feds to keep our website up to date and then do specific more social media blast when we get program information from Mr. Wright.
Thank you so much. All right, any other questions before we move along? All right, seeing none, we do have a motion on the table, so I'll call for a vote. All in favor? And opposed? And that motion is carried. Thank you very much, Mrs. Lutz, for the update, and we'll see you again next time around. All right, let's move along to number four, business arising out of minutes or any unfinished business? All right, seeing none, we will move along to bylaws. Bylaw 5A, CAO, would you like me to go through my spiel before we start, or would you like to introduce?
I'll just introduce it briefly. This is basically a public hearing into our municipal development plan. This is a plan that we've been working on for a number of years, and it is closely connected to our intermunicipal development plan that we passed in the last couple of months with Mountain View County. This is a long-range plan for us to basically have a vision and where we would like to see our town grow, so we can anticipate the various infrastructure and other costs, as well as where the the amenities that we'd be planning in regards to the global items such as the parks and things of that nature. So I would like for you to go through the process of a public hearing, and then we'll entertain comments and questions once that process has basically been dealt.
Excellent. Thank you so much. All righty, so Section 172 of the MGA says that you may not take part in the discussion and decision-making on any matter in which you have a pecuniary interest. The legislation attempts to ensure that you are not discriminated either for or against by virtue of your membership on council. If you have a pecuniary interest, you are to disclose that you have an interest and its general nature. You are to abstain from the discussion of the matter and from voting. You are to leave the room until the matter has been dealt with, and you should make sure that your abstentation is recorded in the minutes. You are not to be discriminated against and are entitled to participate in a public hearing as a member of the public. So I hereby call the public hearing for bylaw 2020-14 to order. Would the Planning Department like to explain the purpose and effect of the bylaw?
Thank you, your worship, members of council. For those that are trying to recognize a voice, it's Craig Teel from Parkland Community Planning Services. The purpose of the bylaw is to consider adoption of the updated Town of Olds municipal development plan. I have a presentation that will walk us through some of the content of that. It's oriented for those that are joining us for the first time, because I'm confident that all council members and senior staff would pass the open book test if we were to have such an exercise happen. So with that, your worship, probably about a 15-minute presentation, go through the material as at that stage of the public hearing.
You go ahead, Mr. Teel.
Soon as I get, there we go, right screen working for me. So hopefully, that is showing up on the screen down there. It should be a big slide that says, what is a municipal development plan? And very briefly, a municipal development plan is one of the types of plans, a statutory plan that is required of the town under the municipal government act. It is a high-level, long-range, strategic policy plan, and what that means is it takes a very general look at the future growth and development of the community over a long-term range, number of years into the future. It serves as an overall guide and blueprint for other decisions that would be made by council or my staff, be it approving a subdivision, approving rezoning, approving a restructure plan for a new neighborhood. It very much helps shape the physical landscape of the community, both in terms of what it will look like in the short term to that long-term, 25 to 30 years out. As development takes place, it's important to note that not everything in the MDP will happen overnight. It's very much an aspirational document that looks like, where do we want to be in that 30-year timeframe further out? And maps out a process on how we're going to get there. While the MDP covers a lot of physical things, it talks about activities and features located within our community. It also tries to address the environmental, social, economic, and cultural and governance implications that come with those kinds of decisions, such as if we have a bunch of activities, we need to go from A to B. How does that relate in terms of service provided for transportation or protective services for our growing community? In terms of a document, the MDP starts off with some context and background materials in the initial stages. Lets the reader know a little bit about what Olds has been facing in the last few years. Our update point was from 2006. It's when the last MDP was done. We tried to bring that up to eat with data up to the 2016 census, which is when we started this process. So we're already into that 30-year timeframe that the MDP talks to. After that, the plan starts heading into what is the, the vision, and what's the actual future direction for the community? That starts with a vision statement, which is largely intact from the 2006 exercise, which had the community help us build a one-and-a-half-page vision. They have lots of dreams and aspirations about what they'd like to be in the 20 years in the future. We've added there a series of principles, the five pillars of sustainability, to help flesh some of that out. Document then moves on to a set of goals, objectives, and policy statements across 15 different topic areas. And finally, not least, which is there a future land use map that tries to communicate geographically where major activities, uses, and features will take place? When we read the MDP, it's important to note that there's a lot of text, a lot of material. Only those statements, and there's 120-plus of them that are labeled as policy, actually have a bearing in council's future decisions. And they try to help reach the desired vision and identify the town's expectations for a variety of key subjects. It's also important to note that the policies reflect decisions that are within town council's control. So sometimes the manager, the main actor in the entire document, is town council in either approving something or asking the developers who wish to develop the land within the town's boundaries to achieve a certain thing, or encouraging other parties. Despite how we might feel, big decisions outside of our control, like certain pipeline approvals, really, the MDP is not the tool to direct actions to be undertaken by other parties or other actors, or third-party players. In terms of the content of the proposed MDP, the vision itself is, I mentioned, a page and a half. I paraphrase it for six points that are up on the screen. It very much includes becoming a bigger or larger community compared to where we're at today. So growing from around 10,000 to around the 18,000, 19,000 mark over that 30-year period, and still maintaining a lot of connections, both to fellow residents and to that bigger economy and environment beyond the town's boundaries. It does speak very much to having a safe, healthy place to raise family, interact with friends. It speaks to maintaining our vibrant uptown, which is our, the Olds equivalent of downtown area, both as an area to meet and an area of very great interest in terms of origins of the community. It speaks to creating a range of employment opportunities, be it agriculture-related, ranging to high-tech. While it talks about future growth and, and becoming that larger community, it also speaks to holding on to a small-town feel and atmosphere as long as possible. And finally, it does speak to the issue of community pride, both in terms of what's been accomplished today and what can be accomplished in the future. Reinforcing that are five principles that you see also on the right-hand side of the screen. So one, social, looking at how we can be inclusive, bring people together. Three, two, looking at environmental implications, and what that means, what our development and future growth means for those systems that sustain us. Looking at economic development opportunities for more employment or wealth generation. Looking at our collective heritage and culture, so on the cultural side. And also how we make planning decisions, what's the governance model in terms of participation and involvement by other players? This concept that you see up on the screen, hopefully, is a very colorful graphic. The future land use concept is a key aspect of the MDP that tries to identify where various activities and features will happen across the geographic landscape of the town. It's at the very back of the document, but it does build with all the text that's in the other 15 sections that I mentioned. So it's important when applying the policies of the municipal development plan, you may start by checking out a particular quarter section, seeing what the long-range land use is. But then you do have to work through the various policies to make sure you understand the full implications of what it may take to develop some of that land. The area that you can see showing colors indicates growth of the community from that 19, 9,000, 10,000 population up to around 36,000 population. So that's going well beyond the 25- to 30-year timeframe of this particular MDP. It also goes outside of the town's boundaries and starts dovetailing with the work that was done on the interest development plan. So in that respect, the two plans inform one another. The IDP sets aside the land needed for the town's anticipated growth, not just for the next generation, but for the subsequent generation beyond that. The I D P sets aside the land needed for the town's anticipated growth, not just for the next generation, but for the subsequent generation beyond that. And then the M D P fills in the more details in color form about what the intent is for the future land use and features that will go in those areas. For those trying to get your bearings, highway twenty-seven is the twinned black line running right through east-west here. Highway two A in a north-south fashion here. The college lands generally here. The railway tracks. Downtown, sorry, uptown. Walmart, Canadian Tire, over in this general vicinity. It's important to note that while it'll take time to grow this area that we're seeing in the, sorry, I'm sure. The red dash line is the town's present municipal boundaries. So some of the lands that you see identified for future residential growth, that's yellow or industrial, and that's the pink. And the red and commercial areas and some of the open space areas will remain in agricultural use for many, many years. So the plan does talk about accommodating that agricultural use of land until such times that area is needed for urbanization. As the area transitions from a farmer's field, such as down this particular location, by way of example, there's an expectation that more detailed planning in the form of an area structure plan is done. That area structure plan takes its lead from the M D P policies. That then leads on to council decisions about specific land use by law districts that get assigned to the land. Leading to subdivision and then development of inch for inch of parcels. So the M D P very much sets in place the overall guide for those future implementation actions. When a developer or landowner is prepared to come forward and start developing their land. The, it's important to note that while we go beyond the town boundaries, that's for communication or information only. The plan's policies only apply to the lands within that red boundary within the town's jurisdiction. It's important though for us to look beyond the line to then understand the implications for land use patterns, making sure we're not having industrial coming up or butting against a future residential area, looking at infrastructure connections and looking at transportation corridors and connections. So picking it apart a little bit more and talking about some of the specific policies, we're gonna look at where the commercial lands are ultimately set out in that particular a map. So everything that you see up on the screen right now is intended to be either existing or in the future developed, or either highway commercial or mixed use development. Or a traditional pedestrian oriented commercially, we see down in the uptown area. So the uptown area is the dark red and then local and highway commercial is the the lighter shade of red that's shown on the drawing. As you can see, that highway twenty-seven will remain a significant corridor or main foyer for the community. So basically balancing out some of the commercial development that we've seen on the west end so far with more development on the east end, extending out towards the Q E two and creating that more of a balance with downtown or uptown, so we're largely in the center. There's certainly policies in the talking that talk about making sure that that is an aesthetically pleasing form of development going forward. So making sure that it does that front foyer type appearance and gives a good solid impression for people coming to the community for the first time or going through the community. It's also speaking to making sure that that could be mixed use, a little bit more pedestrian oriented, not necessarily always vehicle oriented. So quite a few policies that go into the commercial area. For many of this, this is also a source of employment area where many of our residents and people from the surrounding area will find employment. And certainly, it's also where we shop or recreate in commercial settings. Outside of that corridor, you see a few isolated areas for commercial that could be a neighborhood node or a, just a local one-off location for a convenience store or gas bar. And that would be fleshed out in more detail as area structure plans are prepared. The next major category, the pink or mode is the industrial area. So this is where we put some of the, not necessarily most attractive activities and uses that happen within our community, but are necessary in terms of building that local economy and making sure that we have employment opportunities available. So we have to have options and opportunities for these businesses to locate, set up, and go about their business without necessarily facing a whole series of complaints. We also have to make sure we pick locations where they have good access to transportation networks. And you can see that in this particular case, they tend to be along highway two A, along the twenty-seven, easy access. And sometimes along the railway. One of the chief things that we recognized during the M D P review was the need to have additional lands, more so than the southeast and west area and the existing imperial estates area for future industrial. And that led to the creation of the northeast industrial area up here in the very northeast corner, which is also now the subject of the annexation proposals going forward. To provide more opportunities for agribusiness or any other related industry that wants to look at Olds and set up and have options and choices for them to do so. Between the red and the pink, it was also important to make sure that we had enough land to achieve a key policy objective of balancing the assessment base. And making sure that there's thirty percent of the assessment basis from non-residential uses. Which helps offset the burden of providing services to the seventy percent of the tax base that is residential. A yellow is the area that is meant to be residential and either existing neighborhoods and subdivisions. And future neighborhoods and that had yet to be designed and developed under the guidance of the M D P. So this is in essence where we would find space to house thirty-six thousand people over the long term. So well beyond that twenty forty-six timeframe of the current plan. It speak, there is a section devoted to housing design and it speaks to having a mix of housing types and uses in the yellow areas. It also speaks to making sure we achieve a reasonable, efficient use of land, so a density of eleven to thirteen units per acre. That's not building downtown Toronto, which is maintaining a small town character. Even though there may be spikes and areas as neighborhoods are designed that have higher densities and that, the overall average is expected to stay down around that thirteen units per hectare range. There's a need to make sure that we have inclusive housing in these areas as they're designed. So that includes both various types of housing forms and able to hit different market segments from attainable and affordable to full market value, to dream homes, to social inclusive housing. There's a lot of weight following your expectations. That will come within our neighborhood design in the residential areas. This next one fills in some more holes that looks at the open space and major institutional areas within our community. That includes key features such as the college cemetery, the hospital locations, the arena site. And the future operations center, those are largely the light blue or public institutional uses that you see shown on the map. Most of the green is lands that would be either devoted as park space. Or acquired as a school site, not all the future open space that the town would be expected to to have is shown on this graphic. It's largely the the big picture items, like future schools, which tend to be in the ten to twelve acre allocation. Local taught lots, trail corridors would be filled in as individual neighborhoods goods are are designed. And the last slide in terms of the breakdown is having these activities divert, spread around various areas of the candy. The overall transportation network to allow us to move from the activity area A to activity area B. And move around the community, you know, hopefully in an efficient way, both in terms of people movement and the movement of goods and supplies. While the graphic suggests that it is very much road oriented, and that is what it does show, there are, the black are the major arterial routes. So our heaviest volume, traffic volume corridors. The gray are the collector routes, so the second heaviest or highest. Then the highways themselves are part of the arterial network. These are intended to be multi-user transportation corridors, although it's probably fair to say most of them is very much automobile, automobile oriented right now. But certainly over time, more pedestrian facilities, bicycle facilities, and as the community grows, even the need for transit facilities have to be taken into account when trying to plan this kind of network. One of the key objectives of the overall update was to make sure that the land use concepts and this particular network shown aligns with the twenty-ten transportation master plan that was adopted by council. That's commonly referred to as a BUN study, looked at the overall transportation needs of the community extending out to that thirty-six thousand population range. That matches up with what we're mapping out for the M D P. And the need to identify key transportation corridors and make sure that the lands are there for the time when the town will need them. Transportations will grow, systems will grow with the community as the population increases. So that means there's two key corridors running east, east-west, one from twenty-seventh here up over the railway tracks over the seventieth and then down the west side of town. And the other from highway two A over the tracks across fifty-seventh and eventually over to seventieth avenue. Those two east-west corridors, you want, try to address one of the major transportation network issues flagged for the the county that you currently experience quite a bit. In terms of the choke point being this intersection here at highway two A and twenty-seventh, where everyone who wants to make their way up to the highway and the second choke point being at fiftieth avenue and twenty-seventh. So in the long term, especially as more traffic grows, there's more industrial areas, more areas to live in, people trying to get to work. Because they're trying to move around, we need a more robust east-west transportation network. So we put those all back together, we're back to our land use concept again to show how they all relate. And by and large, industrial areas in the southeast, the northeast. And opportunity for up in the northwest. Residential largely focusing as much as we can in the central built up core extending to the south until we can run into constraints. And then extending to the north, past the town's current boundary. So we had to deal with the replacement of this industrial area, we displaced what was planned to be residential. And that's been made up with the four quarter sections that you see across the top of the M D P. And that's the major change from our ship from two thousand and six version. One of the other interesting items that you find contained with the M D P that is different from the two thousand and six document is the concept of future tree reserves. So this is the opportunity to create two new tree reserve areas. And the existing one is down here in the southwest corner, which is around twenty acres. Residents have benefited using that forestry canopy area for quiet enjoyment for many, many years. The idea is to create two locations generally where they're shown in A and a B. In around the ten to twelve acre mark, these would are definitely take land acquisition on the part of the town, negotiations with landlord. It's a precise location is not a hundred percent nailed down. It's meant to be in those general quadrants. And the other thing about the tree canopies, if there's a desire to have them available for enjoyment in thirty years. That means the land has to be acquired and a lot of trees have to be planted within the next two to three years, which means it has to find space within the relatively short term capital plan of the town to be able to go ahead. So with that, your worship, I'm gonna switch my attention over to the R F D very briefly. Certainly, there is a lot of changes that have been made in the document since two thousand and six. I'm not gonna go through all of those. I will point out to council that you have the three or four page summary in your package that flags those. And if there's any questions with anyone of them in particular, I'd be more than happy to address those. Also attached to the R F D is the input that we received. Leading up to the time when the report was prepared. That comes along with a critique from administration on how to respond to the various points, whether or not there's a need for any change in light of the input being received. And I very much be willing to answer any questions around that as well. Finally, there is another attachment where there's a series of proposed amendments which link to the material that's up on the slide in front of you. Administration is recommending some changes to the plan compared to what was put before council at first reading in response to some of the input that we've received. So briefly, that includes a series of amendments, what I'm calling set one in response to Mountain View Regional Waste Commission's input. Those comments relate predominantly to the former waste transfer station, which I'm highlighting there on the map. Now that it is successfully going through a sales process, it will no longer be available as a future waste transfer station, given the policy changes council made to the land use by law. There is a series of amendments and references that are shown on the first part of that attachment that goes part of that set one. The other set relates to comments from Mountain View County and the general theme of Mountain View County's comments is to make sure that the town remembers that there is an intermunicipal development place and that there is a jurisdictional boundary to respect. And certainly, we've tried that throughout the update of the M D P and also trying to communicate what's needed to understand the town's long term future direction and aspirations. For the most part, the administration's recommending that changes to accommodate Mountain View County's comments be made. And you can find those again in that same attachment. The one area where I am not recommending that we make a change in response to their comments deals with the the location of where compensation would go, or any wetlands that are displaced within Olds boundaries as development occurs. The decision on that is ultimately made by the province. So this is the town's opportunity to express your desire on where a replacement wetland would be. And the current M D Ps, the current text suggests three to five miles of the town boundaries. As opposed to the watershed, which is the other suggestion, because the watershed that Alberta Transit, or sorry, Alberta Infrastructure Environment and Parks, sorry, would use is very sizable and extends as far east as the Drumheller region. So that means the wetland would be nowhere near, potentially nowhere near Olds in terms of replacement. With that, your worship, I ends my formal presentation. I'm happy to field any questions about any of the material in the R F D or any material in my presentation.
Excellent, thank you very much, Mr. Teal. We'll hold council's questions till after we go through the rest of the process. Presentations before council shall be brief and to the point and limited to five minutes. Council should not be allowed to cross examination of a person giving information. And is not necessary for the person giving information to verify his or her qualifications. Council may ask questions of the speaker after each presentation for clarification purposes. No debating or questions from the floor will be allowed and no written or verbal submissions will be received by council after the public hearing is closed. Persons addressing council will state their name and address and indicating if they are speaking on their own behalf for a client, a company, or a citizens group. So at this point in time, I would like to make the first call for all of those who are in support of the proposed bylaw to make a presentation. And now it's my understanding, Mr. Teal, you have gone through all of the submissions and the people who'd like to speak. So I will tap on you to let me know who's in support, who's opposed, and who's deemed effective.
Thank you very much, your worship. I should point out, I also have two letters to that came in afterwards to read into the record. I'm pointing if you wish me to do that. I don't believe we have any that have indicated to me prior that they wish to speak in support of the M D P.
Okay, so I will move along to, as is customary, to make the second call for all those who are in support of the proposed proposed bylaw to make a presentation. Seeing none, we'll, we'll move on to the, sorry?
I think there should have been at least two gentlemen, individuals that wish to speak based on the pre-registration, your worship?
In support?
Sorry, did, opposed.
Opposed, okay. I'll make the first call for the opposed, proposed by law at this present, at this point. So do you have an order you were going to take them in, Mr. Teal?
I do not. I think probably Mr. Godwin. If he's on the line, may wish to go first, your worship. I'm not sure if he can hear us.
Okay, Mr. Fox, could we, Mr. Godwin? All right. Mr. Godwin. If you could state your name, address, and whether you're speaking on your own behalf or for somebody else. Mr. Godwin? Hello, Mr. Godwin? He's showing there, now he showed a mute, okay, now on mute. Mr. Godwin, are you there now? Okay, we have some technical difficulties. So, Mr. Teal, could you reach out to Mr. Godwin and maybe we can get him in some other way? I do see we have Mr. Roseboom. And perhaps we should go to him first and then see if we can get Mr. Godwin's technical difficulties worked out. Mr. Roseboom?
Your worship, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay.
State your name, your address, and whether you're speaking on behalf of yourself or a group.
My name is George Roseboom and I'm speaking on behalf of Discovery Plains A S P.
Excellent. Thank you.
Okay. Do you want me to start?
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you, your worship. On behalf of Discovery Plains Developments Inc. and the Development Managers, Rose On behalf of Discovery Plains Developments, Inc., and the Development Managers, Rose Tree Developments, I would like to register and express our objection to the proposed municipal development plan. Our goal is to work with the town of Olds and in a proactive way within the limits of our obligations. And in fact, what we're doing is representing two hundred plus in Alberta investors who have entrusted us with management of these lands. So our developments are known as Discovery Plains AS under the ASP. And we already have land use approvals for phase one of residential development. So it's a statutory plan that already approved. Our significant concerns right now revolve around the forested area. And we've actually articulated our concerns for the last two and a half years in emails, for instance, one was sent out to the town of Olds, June twenty second, two thousand and eighteen. And where we were concerned that the, there was a a proposed forested area within our development area. And as, you know, experienced developers, our goal is, of course, to create as much value and create a great community for people to work, play, and live in. And one of our concerns is that there's going to be with the large forested area within our, our plan is that it'll consume most of the ten percent MR that is allotted for our lands. And so to our understanding, we'd only be left with about one point five acres left to create a great community for people to live in, for pathways and parks, et cetera. So we were told that we would be consulted before anything was finalized with the MDP in an email, June twenty fifth, two thousand and eighteen from the town staff. And but we were not consulted to any extent, and that has a great concern for us and for protecting value for the investors. So I understand there's some rationale for putting the forested area within our area is because there's a water main available on Sierra Drive. Our concern is that for a small cost reduction, we're negatively affecting our statutory area structure plan in our approved land use areas. And it's not really connected to the pathway systems from what we can see. And in, and in light of the fact that we've already been negatively affected by the realignment of Fiftieth Avenue, we thought there would be some understanding about the situation and the proposal with the forested area. So there's a, we want to work positively with the town. And so before any kind of final reading, I think that we could move forward with a couple of different ways. We could move the forested area to another piece of land that doesn't have a statutory ASP. And then the eleven point eight eight acres, another option is based on the value, we could come to a price and negotiate that before the final reading. And or the town possibly pays for a redesign of our neighborhood and incorporates a forested area in a storm pond constructed by the town of Olds. So there's a couple of areas that we'd like to throw out there as considerations. We look forward to the dialogue achieving a mutual acceptable outcome for the town of Olds and our neighbors. And we do ask that our concerns are taken into consideration at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roseboom. Council, are there any questions for clarification? From Mr. Roseboom, and I'm sorry, everybody got shuffled yet again, so I'm trying to watch for hands. So if I don't get the order quite right, Counselor Harper.
Thank you very much. Just in reference to a question about trails, just clarification through you to our administration. Are walking trails considered part of an MR in other developments, i.e. the Highlands and the business?
Is Director Chance there to answer? Cao?
Sorry, can I get a clarification again from Counselor Harper?
Just when walking trails are designed, do the developers use that, those walking trails as part of their MR designation?
So we have those discussions with all the council, of all of developers that sometimes, yes. And sometimes those walking trails are within road right of ways as well. So if it's within a road right of way, then it's not designated as their MR. It's part of the road right of ways.
Thank you.
Yeah, usually a lot of those walking trails are part of the stormwater retention ponds. As this one shows as an approved ASP, there's two stormwater retention ponds in the middle of this development that do have extensive trails around it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Maybe a question for Mr. Teal. This, the, the two tree reserves that we've identified in this this development plan are, they're, they're fluid, correct? They're not set in stone. We haven't got, you know, a ten acre parcel mapped out. They certainly are, can be shifted, can they not?
Your worship, in my interpretation is yes, graphically, it doesn't look like much, because we have specifically flagged area and put it A in the B. But when you look at the text that goes in it with this section, does speak to working with the landowners very specifically that the location is not set in stone. It's going to be a negotiated process to achieve it. With the key point being that D is kind of over there in the northwest corner. And A is kind of up here in the central northeast so that we distribute them for access across community as community grows.
Right. So just for clarification, the, those reserves can be shifted and morphed and in Discovery Plains, we can go not the full ten acres, you know, knock it down to five or whatever. You know, working with the different developers is certainly a plan. Like I said, nothing's written in stone, correct?
That's correct, your worship.
Okay. Counselor Thompson?
For yourself, your worship, to Mr. Teal, what are the implications of municipal reserve being built into stormwater ponds? Can you offer some, some insight into that theory?
Okay, certainly. So municipal reserve is up to ten percent of the area being developed. And utility or stormwater management is a utility function that has to be accommodated as well. Sometimes these two can overlap and you can achieve a purpose. So you could have a decent walking trail around the edge of the storm pond, which may be same thing we would use municipal reserve for. So it could be integrated in that way. Integration into things like a school site or a sports field, probably not so much. So in our policy plan, we do indicate where the priorities are. And sometime we have to use that MR for functional needs first. So if we need a good tot lot, we need to make sure we look at that. And if there's, once we've looked at all those needs, get their space left for other considerations like the fringe lands around the stormwater management pond, that could be then taken into account.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Roseboom had signaled the additional, I think, here.
Pardon me, Mr. Teal, sorry?
I think Mr. Roseboom wanted to make another comment.
Okay, yeah, Mr. Roseboom?
Yeah, I've, I've been a land developer for quite a few years and the issue with putting an icon on your land is typically that it, it's almost a statement of claim. And as investors or purchases of some lots, et cetera, look at the municipal development plan, they look at that and, and see it as something that has some staying power. And so if even in the draft, if it's, doesn't matter where it is, it'd be good if it was put on land that doesn't already have an area structure plan on it.
Okay, fair enough. All right, any other questions, Counselor Ryan? And then we'll have Counselor Harper after.
Thank you, your worship. I just have a question with regards to this. So my, my understanding and hearing from you, Mr. Roseboom, is that you've had no discussions at all with regards to your property in, in, and the urban forestry area that we're talking about. And I'm just wondering what, what slipped through the cracks here, why we wouldn't have have heard from, from Mr. Roseboom and his people before. I'm not sure who could address that answer, but somebody should speak to this, I hope.
Mr. Chair?
Thank you through the chair. Maybe the direct conversations with Mr. Rosenbaum may not have taken place with him directly, but through the development of this many different stakeholders on this development, that discussion has had taken place through there with different variations of how to get this development started. So we've had lots of discussions with previous involved parties, so to speak, with this, whether it be architectural engineers or their, their deep services engineers and things like that with this development. So you'll please understand that this is, this ASP was approved in excess of ten years ago, and many discussions have taken place in that ten years. So we have, they have been identified as the ASP and with Mr. Teal has also reached out as well, part of this pieces with different players in the game.
Thank you very much. Back to Counselor Harper.
Thank you very much, your worship, through you to Mr. Teal and to Mr. Roseboom. So the Discovery Plains ASP takes the, in the entire remainder part of that quarter section, then? That's my first question. And would there be an issue if we moved that A icon that's in the map on page thirty nine of our MDP plan, proposed plan, which is fifteen point zero future tree reserves? Would there be an issue if we just moved that A icon up further to our north boundary of the town of Olds? It's just that we're trying to create a tree canopy within our town in areas that are lacking trees. And we've all recognized the enjoyment that our citizens have had on longer walking trails, especially during, in our tree reserve. And we'd like to create that same experience for future residents of other area, areas of our town. So it could be an attraction to that particular development.
Mr. Teal?
Your worship, I think, yes, we could, if council so choose, you could move the icon out. I'm assuming moving it further away from the area you anticipate to grow is intended to give space for the trees. The other issue is I take Mr. Rosenbaum's point about the icon. We're literally just moving it from one landowner that doesn't like the icon to maybe another landowner or two that may not like the icon. And perhaps the alternative approach is to say generally we want to see a ten acre tree reserve. We're going to come negotiate it, and it's going to be somewhere between Fifty Seventh on the west and Fiftieth Avenue on the east. And remove the map.
No, fair enough there. Mr. Roseboom?
Yeah, I didn't, just for clarification, we have met with, with the town of Olds with regard to the forested area. We raised our concerns, but we, on the other side, we didn't get feedback with the solution. We've actually been affected by the realignment with Fiftieth Avenue. So we've already redrawn our, our plans associated with that. Incorporating a future forested area, it appears to any person that would want to buy some of the land, would, they would think that we would have to incorporate some of the forested area in there as well. And so we haven't got a solution. We're willing to consider solutions, but the easiest one might be, as discussed, to move the icon off of our lands.
Mr. Teal?
Yes, worship, I think I've already addressed that one, I think. I mean, our flexible approach would be to not use the icon.
Right, but we do need to sort of designate that area. And now, just for clarification, does Discovery Plains go all the way to the north? For the rest of that quarter, like north of that future school?
I believe, your worship, if everyone, if I'm still screen sharing, or screen sharing?
No, you're not.
Oh. I am not. Okay, so you can't see that.
Sorry. Yeah, bring, bring that up, that would be great.
There we are.
Sorry, it's my mistake. I thought that was still up in front of council. So Discovery Plains area is generally us.
Okay.
And it does take in the Godwin land as well.
All right. Perhaps, yeah. Again, with such a fluid icon, I, I get the idea of the icon. It's not like we're really, we're not talking about a toxic waste dump here. We're talking about a tree reserve that is incredibly popular in our south, southwest area. Number of properties actually are more desirable, but up against that, that tree reserve. So and it being a fluid sort of I, idea and concept, I'm not sure if we would want to completely redraw the whole thing at this point in time. Any suggestions? Sorry, I'm screen sharing. All I can use Counselor Harper's hand rolling. I can't see anybody else. Counselor Blatz, let's go to Counselor Blatz first, then Thompson, then back to Harper.
Thank you, your worship. So going back to then the tree reserve, I do vaguely remember a conversation we had in regards to this, and I am able to look at the area structure plan now. It's on the town website under our planning and development department. But is it not possible to? And if I've missed this, I apologize, but when we, we, we touched a little bit on our walking trails, could we not incorporate some of this green space along with our walking trails and around any of our storm pond situations? Instead of just having one large designated area, because I do agree. I mean, people do like the treat area that we have in the southwest corner. Section over here, it's very, it's used a lot. It's a beautiful place to walk through and everything else, but perhaps maybe we need to look at not such a big, large area, but just spread it out a little bit along those trails and around those storm ponds. Is that something that's is available as well? Through you, maybe to Mr. Teals or Director Champ?
Great, your worship, I'll take first stab at it. I think one of the critical aspects about recreating that experience down in the tree reserve is making sure that you have enough of a wide space. So you get the sense that you're not right on someone's backyard fence. So provided that the alternative design does that same thing, you can't take it and just put trees on either side of a trail and call it the same as a tree reserve.
Okay.
You have to have that two hundred, I think it's almost two hundred meters, one hundred and eighty meters across. So as long as you can achieve that, and if in the middle, instead of trees, it's a storm pond or instead of an open meadow, it's a storm pond area, then you're starting to achieve that same kind of environment that we're trying to replicate.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Fair enough. Thank you. Let's go to Counselor Thompson, or sorry, Director Chat, did you want to?
Thank you through the chair, and I, I think if we go back to our MDP discussions we had with council, there was a number of sites that were, that were suggested throughout the community and, you know, A and B were sort of the two that that came to the top in that. that came to the top in that aspect, and one being within our town limits and one not being in our town limits in that aspect. So and again, yeah, it was, it was kind of like to get a large tract of one parcel to sort of recreate that tree reserve that we already have. And it would take a number of years for that to take place.
Right.
If you wanted to have, you know, lesser tracks, tracts of land and make a forest around a stormwater retention pond, that, that takes up, that's, as a Mr. Teal had mentioned, right? It's not a true reserve, tree reserve, then it's just trees amongst a, around a storm pond. So, so this was, I know we've gone through lots of discussions through this and but again, it, it was just, it is an icon that's on a piece of map and it's up to council's privy to either, you know, move it or, or like to see it stay and work with the developer on how that, that would happen.
Thank you, both Mr. Teals and Director Champ, that, that does answer my question. And I do recall the conversation we had during our initial discussions, for sure.
All right, we'll go to Counselor Thompson first, then Harper, then Overwater.
Your, your worship, I guess my, my comment is, from, from what Mr. Teal has said, and from listening to the developer, it appears as though simply by acknowledging that there will be a tree reserve within those lands, within the two quarter sections that you know, surround that area. It'll, it'll go in one space or the other. I think we can acknowledge that we, we have a desire to place the tree reserve without putting the demarcation point on the Discovery Plains lands. I think all of the language in the document suggests that there needs to be negotiation and there is room for that discussion. So I think we're getting bogged down with where the icon is. It sounds like administration has more work to do to complete this, and, and we can consider this, this request.
C A O.
Yeah, I just want to reflect on many discussions that we've had in regards to the tree reserve and the reason why it was placed where it was, is that the north part of our town did not have any potential for tree reserves. And we were looking for an area that basically would accommodate the northern part of our town, that they would have similar type of amenities that the southern part would have. It is a long-term plan, as Mr. Teal has indicated, a thirty-year plan, which we would be committing to revisiting every five years or sooner, depending off when things start taking place. As Director Champ has indicated, Discovery Plains has been in place for X number of years, over ten, I believe. And there, and I know there has been discussions on this, and I know that this is not the, well, this is the public hearing for this MDP. It's not the first chance for the public to have seen all the documentation where all the various plans were going to be in regards to the roadways, in regards to future school zones and future parks, so to speak. And we've, I know at least one of them took place at the sportsplex we had, which we had a lot of time for people, and we we had a number of staff people available to it. So we've had quite a bit of dialogue, and certainly we shouldn't say it's etched in stone by any stretch of the imagination, but to just eliminate the icon to make us feel good is not really the I don't think the purpose of an MDP. It's just, it's the state where our vision is for our town. To move it someplace else, I think that's well within the purview of council to do so, and certainly I don't disagree with Mr. Roseboom that we should be working with our developers. But to think that we haven't been doing that, I think is erroneous too. We have been working with our developers, and this is something that we will always continue to do. So I just wanted to get us back to the fact that we've had a lot of discussions on this, and there was plenty of opportunity for further discussions. And this is a thirty-year plan, so to speak.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Mr. Merritt. Counselor Thompson, is it a follow-up or a separate question?
Yeah, just clarification, your worship. My, my rationale was, was, was not for feel-good, but there's a lot of wetlands in the adjacent parcel of land to the west, and so I, I thought there was still opportunity to accommodate.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Harper.
Thank you very much, your worship. So reading the verbiage in fifteen point zero, the future tree reserves, this is our, this present council's desire for the future. And one thing that we all recognized, and we spent a good deal of time discussing urban canapes. And that just doesn't mean a few little trees along the trail. We talked a big urban canopy for our residents. We know that it is desirable. It is a feature that is in our southern part of our community for residential developments that is very desirable. And I would feel that we should continue keeping the icons in the northeast quadrant of our town, as well as that northwest quadrant that's really not within town boundaries. Because this is our future that we want to see for long range. And therefore, I recognize that Mr. Roseboom may think that it could affect his development in that area's structure plan. But on the other hand, it could affect his developer very positively. And this is only a desire for our future.
Excellent comment. Thank you so much, Counselor Harper. Counselor Overwater.
Thank you, worship. To Mr. Teal or to Mr. Champ, can you just sort of give me the perspective as to how many acres are in the existing tree reserve in the southwest portion of town, so that we we sort of have a visual that we can all sort of relate to, because we, we discussed it quite lengthy about whether it's a five acre or ten acre, and I, I believe five acre was not going to be acceptable, because we want it to be more than ten trees. So when we talked about, you know, ten acres or, or, you know, for the amount of a tree reserve, that was going to be acceptable. So how much, how many acres are in that existing tree reserve in the, in the southwest?
Mr. Teal or Mr. Chair?
Your worship, it's approximately an eighteen acre block of land.
Yeah.
That is the south, the existing tree reserve.
So I mean, if, if we all of a sudden dropped a tree reserve down to five acres, I mean, really, what's the point of that? I don't, I don't think that would be what our public wants. And, and I have to agree with Counselor Harper that, you know, people want to be on that tree reserve. They want to back onto that tree reserve because they know what's behind them for the rest of their life for being at that house that they've, you know, bought. So I think it could be a very positive thing for Discovery Plains. And I think we do need to leave the icon somewhere there, because again, we did have many hours of conversation about tree reserves and where they should be. So that's just my opinion.
Excellent. Thank you for your comments. Counselor Ryan.
Thank you, your worship. You know, we did, we, I agree with Counselor Overwater, we did have a lot of conversation with regards to trees. I was, my concern always had been about saying we shall be doing, shall be doing this, because, you know, I, I'm always conscious about budgets and the fact that sometimes the tree, tree budget is the first to be cut. No pun intended. But I, I, I do believe we do, do need to have something like this up in the north side of town, simply because it is a beautiful area in the south. People do want to be, be back onto those tree reserves, because they know that no other development is going to happen behind their house. It is a desirable area, but perhaps, you know, within our verbiage that we have within this document, I think we do need to put in there that we fully intend to work with developers on this. I mean, I, Mr. Roseboom did make a good point, the fact that Discovery had given up some concession with regards to fiftieth avenue and the change in there. We need to be a little bit more open to being flexible. I think we can be flexible. This council's always said, we, we have, this is a fluid plan. This is a future plan. I think we could shift the, the tree reserve slightly a bit to, to the, to the west and allow it to be in between the two. I guess parcels of land, once, one by Discovery, I don't know who's, who owns the one to the west, but allow both of them to share in this equally, because it is going to be a fabulous addition to this community. And I think, I think it's going to be a very positive thing, and, but I do think we need to make sure that all along, we work with the developers to make sure it's done right and, and looks great.
Yeah, I agree.
Yep.
Thank you so much, Counselor Ryan. Mr. Teal, refresher memory, is there an ASP directly to the west of where that icon sits?
There is not, your worship.
There is not, okay. And it wouldn't be difficult to perhaps shift it half, half and half, half on the Discovery Plains. And again, such a fluid thing, it may never ever touch Discovery when we get to that point, but, you know, we, we'd certainly want to keep the, the general area of where that's going, because there was a lot of consideration put into, into having that in that area. So would it be difficult to shift it just slightly to the left, or slightly to the west, Mr. Teal?
Making that map change is not difficult, your worship. The issues will be the implications for follow-up and actually implementing and making it happen. So to make it happen, that means in the short term, especially for those who wish to go along with developing their land and not have this kind of a, an open question for the next fifteen years. That is why the policy is written to say, we need to move on with that consultation with landlords sooner rather than later, and make a decision about acquisition.
Excellent.
Mr. Champ.
Director Champ, yeah.
Thank you through the chair, and I'm not sure if this is the appropriate time, but we probably have another landowner that was trying to get on, and to get a, paint the whole picture of the, of maybe who's deemed affected or, or opposed to this ASP, because another landowner that was part of this ASP is, was having some technical difficulties getting on, and they may be able to shed some valuable light to, to the rest of this conversation before we, we make any decisions, so to speak, in, in that, because it did include somebody else's land, another landowner in that parcel, and, you know, my knowledge that they're, they may be still in discussions, but it's not concrete in using that land. So I don't know if Mr. Goodwin has fixed these technical difficulties or not, but it would be definitely good to hear from him as well.
Excellent idea. Thank you so much, Director Champ. Counselor Overwater, before we move on to Mr. Goodwin.
Thank you, worship. Yeah, I do like the idea of sharing that tree reserve on both parcels of the land, because I think it'll be beneficial to both developers, and, you know, the school isn't set in stone either. So I mean, it can be shifted and and back onto a walking tree reserve as well, which I know a lot of times, you know, the, the kids at the schools, they take little hikes throughout the tree reserve down here at the existing tree reserve. So I think it could be beneficial to both developers. So, oh yeah, I would, I would also like to hear from Mr. Goodwin, but just a final comment on that.
Thank you so much, Counselor Overwater. Mr. Roseboom, a closing comment, or are you?
Your worship, we would be prepared to look at shifting it, you know, maybe a third of it on our lands and two-thirds on the other, or perhaps even half and half, but just shifting it right now, in our plans, we have pocket parks throughout the development. And all of our allotment would be taken up by the forested area then, and it doesn't make for great planning.
All right. Well, thank you so much for your presentation. Let's move along to our, my second call for all those who are opposed to the proposed bylaw to make a presentation, and I'm hoping Mr. Goodwin, your technical difficulties have been addressed. Are you there? Can you hear us?
Would he be able to call in, Michael?
Is there a, yeah. Is he on computer, or is he on? You can't tell. Okay, let's try unmuting him one more time. Mr. Mr. Godwin, is your phone on mute, or is your computer on mute? Because that would be different than our Zoom mute.
Could Mr. Godwin send us a chat, at least to indicate that he's hearing us?
Yeah, we're not.
Do we have his phone number?
We do, your worship. I have talked during Mr. Rosenbaum's presentation, spoke, spoke to Mr. Godwin.
Yeah.
And I thought he was trying to dial in instead of using the video link. Apparently that has not worked either.
It's weird.
Your worship, I, I did have the, again, our opportunity to discuss his comments with Mr. Godwin on Friday. I probably could at least relay some of the comments he shared with me verbally.
Right. Yes.
So Mr. Godwin did express concern about the icon being shown on his land and what that meant for future purchasers in terms of the degree of uncertainty and people not being prepared to go ahead with an actual purchase. And his request was that it come off his land so that he has a better chance of, than selling his property. Part of it was because, around the timing, and part of it was about lost opportunity for actual development. And I'm hoping I've done a fair justice to Mr. Godwin's comments.
Okay. Just thinking here.
Your worship, you do have Counselor Overwater raising a hand in case you do, just don't happen to see her.
Counselor Overwater. No, I was just looking for a phone number and trying to maybe get Mr. Godwin on the phone and just put it on speakerphone so that he could, everybody could hear.
Do you want me to speak, Michael?
No, go ahead. Yep, Counselor Overwater.
So in order to, you know, alleviate Mr. Goodwin's comments and Mr. Roseboom, if, if the icon actually just went in the middle of the, at, at the top by the school, put the A sort of in the middle of those two quarter sections, I think that would appease people at this point in time. And as Counselor Ryan said, we would certainly have multiple conversations with the developers, because, you know, we want development in the town of Olds. We don't want, you know, people running away, because, you know, we, we, we plunked a tree reserve in the middle of their whole development and have taken up their green space. So I would think, you know, going forward, if, if it's just a matter of that icon, A, being moved up to by the school, and maybe on half and half of those quarter sections, it, it, I think it would help everybody's concerns and make sure our administration works with our developers going forward.
Thank you.
As they have.
We have, I think we have Mr. Godwin on the telephone now.
Hello, everyone. Can you hear me now?
There we are.
Yay.
Sorry, sorry, it's hard to teach an old guy new tricks. I'd like to just speak for a second on that, and I think that last comments I just heard with you know, moving the icon to where it covers more than one development area, or possibly making the icon larger, saying in this hundred acre area, it would be good to have a tree reserve. I strongly support the tree reserve, but as they, you can have the icon shown, but have a text saying something else, but when somebody's, say, going to buy a piece of land or develop a piece of land, they're going to look at it and go, oh, wow, that's a, that's a lot of land that they want off this little twelve acre piece. It looks like it's six acres they'd want of that piece for the tree reserve, and would then definitely negatively impact the ability to sell the land. So I guess that the idea of making the icon either larger and covering a larger area, or, you know, moving it into a large central area, saying in these, in these two quarters is where we're looking. And then the other point I'd like to make is that, that I was at the meeting at the sportsplex, there was lots of feedback given, but it's not necessarily shown in what's happened. So there was comments made, there was talk, and there has been discussion on the tree reserve, but not all of the So there was comments made, there was talk, and there has been discussion on the tree reserve, but not all of the. I guess input has been taken back and and shown. So I think it's important that when the town moves forward that they communicate better with the developers or the landowners. And that maybe even not, you know, it might be farmland that you then try to acquire for this. But even without an ASP on it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Godwin. It's good that we finally got to hear from you. Again, Mr. Teal, it'd probably be pretty simple to move that AI icon, leave it the size it is and tuck it up under the school. In those two collector roads. Do you understand what I'm suggesting?
I do, Your Worship. Probably by the time we come back to debate on the bylaw, I may have specific wording for a motion for council to consider, consider. This afternoon.
Very good. All right, unless there are any other questions or comments from council. I. Pardon me, Councillor Blatts.
Thank you, Worship. I just want to get one a last comment, and I I agree with what Council Overwater said. I really truly believe that if we move the icon and two developers share a forested forested area would be better. Than just to make one developer alone have to give up all the available land that could be developed and. And I think that is the best route to go where we move that icon, I believe, could perhaps be worked out with these gentlemen, but. I think that that would be the the better option. I do recall the conversations we had with this. Whole situation and and I believe that that would be the best option.
Okay, excellent comment. Thank you so much. Mr. Teal, I believe you had a a letter or communication that you wanted to read into the record.
I do, Your Worship.
Will we do that at this time?
We had a third reg reg registered party, and I'm not sure if Rob Irwin is wishing to speak.
Oh, that was Rob Irwin? Yeah, okay, maybe we can reach out to him and see if he still wishes to speak. And Mr. Teal, if you, in the meantime, could read into the record what you have.
Thank you, Worship. So the first letter, and both are relatively short, comes to us from Alberta Transportation. And it reads as follows. We have reviewed the municipal development plan, and I would advise that we have no objections, but do offer the following comments. Section seventeen, transportation, there is mention of coordinating with the province on Highway twenty seven and Highway two A, which is good. Section seventeen point two, transportation master plan, we cannot find this plan on the town's website. And do not recall reviewing it. As long as this master plan matches up with map two as found in this MDP, then there should be no issue. Map two, overall looks good, as it shows an east-west arterial corridor in both the north and south sides of Olds. Helping to take the pressure off the Highway twenty seven corridor through the town. It does show a possible interchange on Highway two A to the north of Highway twenty seven, which would be costly and also be the town of Olds responsibility. Thank you for the opportunity to provide comments in the town of Olds municipal development plan, should you wish to discuss correspondence, etc. That is on behalf of staff at Alberta Transportation.
Excellent, thank you. And that was the only letter received?
Second one, Your Worship, an email submission from Resident of Olds, Mr. Paul Caves. Hi, Craig. Following our few concerns I have with what should happen before the future development to the town of Olds goes ahead. Number one, bylaws that the town already have in place must be enforced. Transportation sixteen point O through sixteen point nine, speed, noise, motor vehicle nuisance, other traffic infractions. Number two, traffic counts done on major routes such as Fifty Seventh Avenue, south from Fifty Fourth Street. And Fifty Seventh Avenue, north to the hospital, Sixty Fifth and Sixty Fourth Avenue from Highway twenty seven, Highway twenty two A. Number three, account of how many school buses pass through the intersection of Fifty Seventh Avenue and Fifty Fourth Street on a normal school day. Number four, at the next election, a vote should be held to lower the speed limit to forty kilometers on residential roads. Thank you for your consideration.
For thank you, Mr. Teal. Did we have any luck finding Mr. Irwin? No, okay. Yes, Councillor Overwater.
Mr. Teal, are you able to forward counsel those letters?
I certainly can.
There was a few points in a lot of them, so I couldn't get it all down as fast as you were reading it.
The. Yes, bear with me. Unfortunately, Your Worship, in my setup, I have to actually remember all of you.
Okay.
So they're all individualized.
Yeah.
Point of order, it's Marcy here.
Yes.
Mr. Teal, you can send it to me. It'll have to be captured with the minutes through the public hearing anyways, if you wouldn't mind, and I can send it out on your behalf or to the council.
Deal. First one's coming your way.
Excellent. That sounds like the easier option. All right, yes, Councillor Bennett.
Sorry about that. Thank you, Worship. I I'm concerned that these comments weren't. Taken into consideration when we have the open houses. I'm sort of distressed to hear that of them today. I'm always up for having things reviewed, and they are fluid plans. I am wholeheartedly for tree reserves everywhere we can get them in every quadrant of town. But I am a bit dismayed about the comments I've heard today. That's. That's just my point today. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Councillor Bennett. All right, so seeing nothing else and Mr. Irwin didn't pop back in unexpectedly there. All right, so let's move along and I will make the first call for all persons who are deemed affected by the proposed bylaw to make a presentation. It sort of sounds like a couple of the letters encompass that. Seeing none, I'll make the second call for all those persons deemed affected by the proposed bylaw to make a presentation. And as we do not have any anybody else in the queue, does council have any parting comments? I think we all got our say in, so that's good. Would the development officer like to make any final comments? Oh, sorry, Councillor Ryan.
Thank you, Worship. Sorry, I was a little slow on the hand going up because I was trying to find my note. I just have a comment on page fifty four of our agenda. It's ten point seven with regards to attainable, affordable, especially housing. Point number three says a town intends to a partner. I think it should say. May partner or should partner. Do we intend to partner? Like, if we had no funding, we obviously wouldn't be partnering. So I'm concerned about the wording of intends. I know we've been using. Shell should and may throughout the whole document or encourage. I'm just worried about that particular word and how it sounds, and I think. Well, I do agree that and support the need for affordable housing. I'm not sure. Depending on what timing involved, whether or not we would even have budgetary funds if. So and I'm not sure how how. Strong a word intends is as well. I mean, I'm not sure if that ties our hands or not, so I would like to ask. Craig, if you wouldn't mind responding to that item.
Mr. Teal.
Thank you, Worship. I do take the point. I think. I think attends would probably be a stronger word than the may. And for consistency, if you want to stay with that shall, should, may framework, then yes, may would be the better. Phrase, I guess your alternative would be the word should. But I think switching it to the town of Olds may partner.
Yes.
Those are consistent with the terminology elsewhere in the doc.
That would be my my. Preference test. Thank you. I didn't think of the right word.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll encompass those two. Mr. Roseboom. Yes.
Yeah, Your Worship. I'd like to thank the council for taking our concerns into consideration. We'll look forward to negotiating a plan that incorporates part of the forested area. And I'd also like to congratulate the town on flattening the curve on COVID, because that's a good accomplishment.
Yes, yes, the the residents of Olds are nothing if not diligent. With regards to pretty much anything we ask them to do, so it's very much appreciated that everybody is has taken it upon themselves to live up to the AHS. Restrictions, so thank you for that mention as well. All right. Any final sorry comments with from the development officer, Mr. Teal? Any closing words that you'd like before I declare the public hearing closed?
Done for the public hearing, Your Worship.
Excellent. So with that in mind and seeing no hands frantically waving. I will declare the public hearing on bylaw twenty twenty dash fourteen closed. Thank you so much for your participation. Great conversation once again, everybody. And thank you for all the submissions from the affected parties. So, Mr. Teal, you were stating earlier that you would have a. Motion for us to consider.
I dare you, Worship. If council's prepared to move on to consideration of second reading, there are a couple of amendments that need to be addressed first. Some of those were already in the report. And I think on, as a result of the conversation with the public hearing, I have two alternative or additional. Word emotions for council's consideration that I can share as well. Speaking first to the ones that are in the RFD, they've been packaged for the sake of simplicity. However, if there is a need to separate out one or two, Your Worship, that may be the the better way to go and see. Just take them one group at a time.
Okay.
So each amendment to the commit that was presented to council, the first reading has to be consciously voted on by council. And then given direction on, and that's why we now then switch over the terminology to call it. Voting for second reading as amended or third reading as amended, if council chooses to to undertake those today. Does it help if I share the screen again or?
Yes, it can.
So the the first set, Your Worship, dealing with the comments from Mountain View Regional Waste Commission. And that may be better off going to the actual reports. Sorry for any vertigo for anyone that was watching too closely there. So for council, we're at a page one hundred and nine in the agenda package.
Okay.
And that's where you find the first set of amendments, or what I'm calling the first set, ones dealing with Mountain View County, or sorry, Mountain View Regional Waste Management Commission. And Your Worship, I'd be happy to field any questions around that, any of those changes.
Okay, we'll have to get you to unshare your screen. I think everybody has the agenda in front of them.
Great.
Because I can't see my council if. If your screen is shared, I don't see. Any hands waving, although I can't see Councillor Blatts. And I think that's the only councillor I can, oh, there we go, that's.
Sorry.
No, all right. Just didn't want you to have your hand frantically waving.
No, no, sorry, I hit the wrong button. My apologies.
Okay, so the proposed amendments. From the Mountain View Regional Waste Management is on page one oh nine. Is there anything in there that anybody has a question or objection about? Everybody's nodding their heads, so those are acceptable. Okay, Mr. Teal, next set.
I may need some help on the CEO or the clerk. Should we take a vote as we go?
Or legislative clerk? Yeah, I think we should probably have a separate motion for each group.
I tend to agree with that as we don't want to go back and try to revisit, so if we can. Agree as we go, I think that's the best methodology.
Excellent, okay. May I have a motion from council, Mr. or Councillor Thompson? About the amendments on page one oh nine.
Your Worship, I'd be prepared to move that we accept the amendments as proposed on page one oh nine. Numbered one through eight, referring to the Mountain View Regional Waste Management Commission.
Excellent, thank you so much. Comments, questions, concerns regarding this motion? Yes, Councillor Overwater.
I think the terminology on from Councillor Thompson should be different, because not only does it talk about the waste transfer site, it talks about the wastewater surge pond. So. And public institutional to industrial. I mean, it just doesn't speak to the transfer site.
Okay, so a friendly amendment, Councillor Thompson, to the general amendments on page one oh nine.
I accept that.
Excellent. Thank you, Councillor Overwater. Any further comments, questions? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor? And opposed? And that motion is carried. Thank you so much. All right, Mr. Teal, the next set, please.
So Your Worship, on bottom of one oh nine and heading on to page one ten, this set deals with the. Suggested changes from Mountain View County, although not necessarily always the exact wording that they purport put forward in their letter. The exception is one policy or one change dealing with the wetlands, which administration are not recommending a change. Or that that change the made in response to that input. Same process, Your Worship, unless there's specific ones to separate, if there's willingness to move ahead as a package.
May I have a motion from council with regards to the second set? Councillor Harper.
Thank you very much, Your Worship. I move that the amendments as stated in. Our agenda page one oh nine from Mountain View County, one through two, six. Be replaced replaced within our MVP as amended.
Excellent, thank you. Comments, questions, concerns regarding this set of amendments? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor? And opposed? All right, that motion carries. Thank you so very much. And Mr. Teal, next set.
So, Your Worship, I do have two additional motions for your council's consideration based on the conversation during the public hearing.
Yes.
I'm not sure if it's easier for me to just read them slowly for everyone.
Yeah.
Or to type them up on a PowerPoint screen and then show it.
No, let's let's read them.
Okay, in no particular order, I'm going to take the shorter of the two first.
Okay.
So this one deals with the issue we were last talking about for affordable housing in policy ten point seven. And to make the change suggested by Councillor Ryan. The motion would read replace in brackets, or sorry, in quotation marks, town intends to partner, close quotation marks. With quotation marks, town may partner. Close quotation marks in policy ten point seven.
Excellent, thank you so much. Councillor Ryan, would you be prepared to make that motion, please?
Thank you, Your Worship. Yes, I would. Do you want me to just reread it or?
No. As stated, I think is probably good. I'm sure Legislative Clerk has captured that.
Sounds great. Thank you.
Always does. All right. Comments, questions, concerns regarding this motion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote, all in favor. And opposed. And that motion is carried as well. Thank you, Mr. Teal, and to the the last, I think, amendment.
Last amendment, your worship, so this one deals with the A symbol that we were talking about on figure one. And moving that up to the northwest to be closer to the school site and straddling the property boundaries. So the motion would read, move the A symbol shown on figure one on page thirty nine to the northwest to be below the future school site and straddle the property lines between the northeast five and northwest six. Sorry, northwest five. Same quarter, or same same section.
Same section, excellent, and who would like to make that motion, please, Counselor Bennett?
I move as stated that we accept as stated.
Excellent, thank you. Comments, questions, concerns regarding this motion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote, all in favor. And opposed. And that motion is carried as well. Excellent, so now I assume we move along to second reading as amended.
Correct, your worship.
All right, Counselor Blatz, would you like to make that motion?
Yes, thank you, your worship, I moved that bylaw number twenty twenty dash fourteen be given second, as amended, be given second reading. Do I need to quote individually the amendments or, okay?
I think I think we've more than captured that already. All right.
All right.
Comments, questions, concerns regarding this motion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote, all in favor. And opposed. Excellent, that motion is carried. May I have a third reading motion, Counselor Overwater?
Thank you, worship, yes, I moved that byline number two zero two zero dash one four, as amended, be given third reading.
Excellent. Final chance for comments, questions, or concerns? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote, all in favor. And opposed. And that motion too has carried. Thank you so much, thank you, Mr. Rosenboom, thank you. All of our others presentation and to Mr. Teal especially for your incredible hard work on this very momentous Herculean task that we have we have accomplished here and thank you for your consultation and Mr. Chan, to all your your staff as well that have worked so diligently and C A O, of course. All right, let's move along to item five B, Mr. Merritt.
Can we just take a little break?
Would you like a
Seven minute break?
Should we deal with five B first as it's a bylaw and then it's going to be very short, I believe.
Okay, and then we'll get into new business after.
That would be great if we could do that, so I'll ask Director Chan to speak to five B.
I thank you through worship. Five B was supposed to be a public hearing that was to schedule for today. But in between first reading and today, the applicant has withdrawn their application for the site-specific land use file amendment, so that will no longer go ahead.
All right, we'll scratch that off the agenda and move directly into a break. Let's let's do a ten minute break, we'll be back at three oh five.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Did you go outside, MJ? You want the weather report?
It's cold.
It's cold out there.
Yeah. No, I'm watching it. Through my window, it looks, ooh, a little bit chilly.
Well, all I can say is we certainly haven't gotten the wind that down south got and what Edmonton and area got the other night, when I seen trampoline rolling down the street in Sherwood Park, it was like, what? Okay, I didn't see that. Those things aren't light, I mean, the big wind.
I saw the trampoline on top of someone's house in Lethbridge. It wasn't, it wasn't the same person's house that neither.
Oh, my God. Well, my daughter-in-law said that they're shed, like it's on, I don't know, four by fours, you know? And I mean, it's full of stuff, and she said it shifted it. Yeah, yeah. So. Marianne. Oh, it well, it was last week sometime, I don't know, Thursday, Wednesday, Thursday?
I'm saying it's last Tuesday or Wednesday, because
Something like that.
We didn't get it near as bad, but my next door neighbor, her tarp on her convertible almost flew off and would have ended up in probably Didsbury or Three Hills or someplace.
Wow.
If it had got airborne.
Yeah, it's probably not good to have a convertible in high wind areas, I'm thinking.
Not one of those tarps where the wind can go underneath and do immense damage to it.
Yeah.
Mine's parked away.
Oh, yeah, you and Debbie, you guys got convertibles.
Yeah, it's parked.
Glad to hear that.
Indoors, indoors.
All right, folks, that's three oh five, so I'll call today's regular council meeting back to order. Let's move along to new business, item six A, C A O.
Well, thank you, your worship, six A is in regards to changing the terms of reference of the I C C committee. At the December eighteenth meeting, there was a request from an agreement of all I C C members of both the town and the county to make the following changes to the master agreement. One is to delete two items under deliverables, completion of growth management plan, and establishment of any technical slash work committee to help I C C achieve its purpose. These two items became obsolete with the I D P being completed. The second change is in regards to administrative support. And the slight change made there was to change the wording in the second sentence. After the comma to however, with permission of the I C C members, the chair role may be adjusted. And then to delete the second portion of that with the positions rotating between signatures. That was unanimously agreed to by all members, and those are the changes, I believe, Marcy, that were our Chairperson Harper that we were trying to make.
Excellent, thank you so much, C A O. May I start with a motion, please, Counselor Harper, Chairperson Harper?
Thank you very much, your worship, I move that council accept the inter municipal cooperation committee amendments to the I C C terms of reference as presented.
Excellent, thank you. Comments, questions, concerns regarding this motion? Seeing none, we'll go straight to a vote, all in favor. And opposed. All right, that motion is carried, thank you so much, Counselor Harper. Great, let's move along to item six B, council policy one oh six C, C A O.
Thank you, your worship, again, this policy was brought forth on January eleventh, two thousand twenty one, and even though there was a question in regards to the honorarium, I thought that they were correct in fact that the numbers were overstated. So the revised numbers are thirty two seventy nine eighty for the mayor versus thirty three sixty five fifty and seventeen ninety five thirteen for council members versus eighteen forty two point four two. So basically, we're asking council to approve policy one oh C as presented today.
Excellent, thank you so much. May I start with a motion, please? Counselor Ryan.
Thank you, worship, I move the council approved council policy one oh six C remuneration of benefits as presented.
Excellent, thank you. Questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote, all in favor. And opposed. That motion is carried, just for the benefit of the people in the public. Quite often, it looks in the regular council meetings that we move through some of these motions and some of these policies and so forth very quickly. That's largely due to the fact that they've all been presented at our policy and priorities meetings at some point before they get to this point, and there tends to be some rigorous debate and changes made to the policies at that point in time. So when we get here, it's it's typically just a rubber stamp to move it through, so if it looks like we're moving through these things quickly, it's not from a lack of work. We've done that in the past. Counselor Overwater?
Thank you, worship, yeah, I would just like to reiterate that, you know, to our general public that if they really want to hear a lot of the debate, that they should tune into P and P because that is where a lot of the debate happens and then they'll understand why sometimes, you know, it looks like we're just rubber stamping and passing things through without a debate, but I would encourage all citizens to listen to the live stream, I mean, it's pretty easy to do now, so yeah, just a comment for that.
Absolutely, thank you, and that is always the first Monday of every month. We typically have our policy and priorities meetings, so clear your schedules on Mondays, because those are good ones. All right, let's move along to item six C, request for support for reopening small businesses, C A O.
Thank you, worship, normally, we would handle this in regards to correspondence at the end of the meeting, but this one was specific specific request to council to basically ask council to write to the province and ask for support to reopen small businesses as small businesses are being hurt by the restrictions that have been placed by the provincial government. And so what we thought would be wise to move this to a point where council can at least have a discussion on this and then determine how they would like administration to deal with this, uh, specific request or just to accept it for information. So I, basically, the request is very simple. Could you please petition or write to the province asking them to lift their restrictions and to allow businesses to reopen?
Excellent. Thank you, CAO. Oh. Hopping into a screen here. Sorry, I lost everybody there. Um, okay, so may I start with a motion, counselor? I apologize if I didn't get the order right, but Counselor Overwater.
Thank you, worship. Yes, I moved that council direct administration to prepare and send a letter to the Alberta provincial government in support to reopen small businesses with signature of the mayor. And I do have a comment. I, I support, I wholly support businesses being open, but I think we, we've had a mantra where we have followed AHS and the provincial government guidelines and, um, again, like I say, I wholly support businesses opening. I know they need to get open, but in order for them to open, I think we need to continue to follow the AHS and provincial guidelines, so.
Excellent comment. Thank you so much, Counselor Overwater. Uh, any further comments, Counselor Harper, then to Ryan?
Thank you very much, your worship. Um, as the council representative to the Alson District Chamber of Commerce, I wholly support, uh, the Town of Olds writing a letter urging the government to open, to allow small businesses to open. I do know that, uh, our restaurants are doing, are doing as much as they can curbside pickup, but we, we see in our numbers that the numbers are way down in our community. And I know that our small businesses are, have been adhering to Alberta Health Services Guidelines and Procedures. But I think it's time that our, our restaurants and lounges be allowed to open as well as our physical fitness facilities.
Excellent. Thank you, Counselor Harper. Counselor Ryan.
Uh, thank you, worship. Um, you know, I, I do agree that we, we follow the AHS guidelines, um, all along. Uh, but you know, our, our numbers have dropped, and I think it has more to do with the fact that everybody's wearing masks than it has to do with the opening and closing of the businesses. Um, you know, hairdressers, uh, and, um, you know, barber shops were, were uh, there, there was a report, uh, from, uh, Dr. Hinshaw that they, there was very little, uh, or any, or if any uh, reports of COVID in any of those establishments, and those were closed. Um, so I'm, I'm, you know, I'm just not sure whether or not that's making the big difference, having store, uh, those, those businesses opened or closed. Or whether it's because we're all now, uh, wearing masks, uh, as mandatory. Um, so I, I am support, I, I do support this letter, um, going out. Uh, I don't think it'll have any effect, but I, I do think that we should show support for our small business.
Excellent. Thank you, Counselor Ryan. Counselor Blatt.
Thank you, worship. I too concur that I believe we should write a letter to support small businesses opening and and particularly those of our restaurants and tho- and, and fitness centers and such, because many of our people are suffering from wintertime doldrums at the best of times, let alone a year like this. And I think for the mental well-being of many people to be able to get out and even if you have to sit with your cohorts and or your own family, at least have an option to go somewhere else or to do some exercising, I think would be very beneficial. So I would definitely like to see us support this letter.
Excellent. Thank you, Counselor Blatt. Uh, Counselor Bennett.
Thank you, worship. I too would like to support the letter. And as others have stated, the doldrums have set in, and I think because our numbers are down. I, in support of our businesses as well, I feel for everyone who has a business and in particular, those that can't open for various reasons. So yes, I'm inclined to agree, we need the letter sent.
Excellent. Thank you so much, Counselor Bennett. Um, I will, um, throw my two cents worth in there. I think um, our number showing where they're at today uh, is just as much or more to do with the sacrifices that, uh, all of our residents made over the holidays, especially, uh, by limiting or, or completely, uh, uh, getting rid of all of our social gatherings. I know my poor mother was devastated not to have Christmas this year. Uh, as we normally do, uh, we did do a little virtual sort of thing, but um, it's the sacrifices of our population, of our residents here in the Town of Olds. Um, I believe, uh, over the holiday season that, uh, has resulted in this massive drop in, in cases in our area. So again, uh, I know council backs me up on this. Thank you so much for, for all your sacrifices and everything that everybody has done in our community. Um, to adhere to the AHS, um, uh, protocols, and, um, I think we can do both at the same time. Certainly adhere to the, the, the mandates and the protocols that are in place, but at the same time lobby for our small businesses. Uh, and again, you know, we see other communities, uh, where businesses were defiant and so forth. Uh, we didn't have much of that in the Town of Olds. So once again, kudos to our small business owners as well. Um, unless there was any other, yes, Counselor Ryan.
Uh, thank you, worship. I was, I was just gonna say, well put. I mean, I agree. I think, uh, all those things that we've all done, the wearing the masks, the social distancing, the uh, non-socializing and, and, um, you know, all of it worked together to bring our numbers down and uh, kudos to everybody for following those, those regulations, because, uh, they, they have shown that they have worked. I just, I just don't think we need to penalize businesses, uh, keeping them closed for, for no reason, uh, other than I don't know, some arbitrary thoughts of, of somebody.
All right. Thank you, Counselor Overwater.
Thank you, worship. Uh, don't get me wrong. I, I want all of our businesses to be open too. Um, and I, I support writing the letter. I just don't want, um, you know, things to get out of hand where businesses, um, not saying our businesses would, but you know, our neighbors to the north, we have some businesses open under, uh, different circumstances and we're fined and, and, uh, having legal issues. So you know, I support sending the letter and I support our businesses being open. I just don't want, um, all of a sudden businesses to, um, open without, um, following the guidelines of AHS and, and the government, because you know, I think that will get everybody into trouble with, uh, legalities. So I do support the letter.
All right, Counselor Thompson.
You know, worship, I, I too want to see our, our small business open and thriving and succeeding and, and doing so in a, in a safe and healthy manner. Um, one of my, I guess, one of my questions regarding our letter, though, is, is this is one of those lead by example kinds of opportunities and and when we start writing letters to the province, asking them to open business, are we also going to, to do the same in the municipal space? Uh, by advocating to the province to open business, people will have to leave their homes and go to work. Um, will we also be calling staff back to the municipal office? I know they're working hard, but you, you get the, um, you know, I don't, I don't want to be hypocritical about, about our stance with the place we're taking.
All right, um, CAO, would you care to address that?
Well, I'll let Counselor Harper speak, because she had her hand up first, so.
All right, Counselor Harper.
Thank you very much, your worship. And through you to Counselor Thompson. Our town office is open. Uh, we are not talking about, uh, the opening of our recreation facilities that with this letter, we're talking about opening our small business community. And my understanding is that our town staff, um, especially our office staff are indeed working. So we're not being hypocritical in the least. I think this letter is a support for small business community and for the workers of the small business community and directing the, the government to say it's time to open up these, these other small businesses, restaurants, fitness centers. And we're not talking about recreation facilities at this point.
All right. Thank you, Counselor Harper. Counselor Thompson.
Worship, and thank you, Counselor Harper. And, and that's, that's my, my point in, in raising the, the comment, right? Um, I, I do feel the town staff have, have worked through things and, and are doing so. Um, in writing a letter and support a business, I think that's just, just a, uh, you know, a, a feel-good, really good thing to do. Um, my, my comment being is we also need to, to recognize that, um, when we, we ask for things, it does impact people. Our, our businesses will start to call on staff and and I just want people to be mindful that, um, there are different comfort levels. Um, it doesn't make it right or wrong, and, um, uh, it would be great to see business going back to normal. Uh, but we all still need to be somewhat vigilant as well.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Counselor Blatt.
Thank you, worship. I I really truly believe that if, if we write a letter of this in, in support, uh, it may, it may work or it may not work, but at least we're trying to do something to get our economy started again and get people back to work. And I think it would be individually up to each and every own business owner and those individual employees, if they feel comfortable going to work or not at this point in time. And but I think that we need to do something and start a process to get everybody back and get some normalcy going again. So as I stated earlier, people's well-being is the majority of concern that we all have. And I don't think we want to do anything, nor would we ever do anything that would jeopardize that with anyone. So I believe that writing a letter such as this just could start a process and maybe other communities will follow suit. Who knows? But I do believe it is something we should be doing, and I support the letter. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. And finally, Counselor Overwater, before we
Sure. Just, just a last comment. Uh, with, uh, Counselor Harper being our, uh, representative on the, uh, Chamber of Commerce. Uh, like I said, I support, um, you know, our mayor sending a letter. But, uh, would you, would the chamber have a template that they could give to their businesses that belong to the chamber and possibly pass it on to the Uptown Olds Committee so that, uh, you know, more letters are, are better than one. So you know, if there was a template that the Chamber of Townholds came up with to pass on to their businesses, to send into the premier's office and to Dr. Dina Hinshaw, I think, I think, you know, if they're flooded with, uh, overwhelming response on letters versus just one letter from each municipality, I think that might, you know, sometimes more is better.
Counselor Harper.
Thank you very much, your worship. As a matter of fact, the old district chamber commerce has indeed sent a letter on behalf of its members, um, in support of small business opening. And, um, I'm sure that we would be more, or our president would be more than happy to share that letter with, uh, all of its members as well as the, the Uptown Committee, Uptown Olds Committee. So I will discuss that with her as soon as we're done our meeting.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Alrighty, so we have a motion on the table, so I will call for a vote. All in favor? And opposed? Excellent. That motion carries. Alrighty, that brings us to a couple. Sorry? That brings us to a couple of added items. Uh, item six D, uh, policing conference. Counselor Overwater. You're on mute.
My husband's grabbing his computer. Normally, he's got it before we come into this, but anyways, yes. Um, okay.
Joys of working from home.
Um, so we've had our first, uh, uh, Olds Police Advisory Committee meeting, and, um, there is a conference in Brooks on April twenty-third and twenty-fourth. And it's a annual conference and, and their AGM, and there is many, um, items, uh, of topic on there for police committees and advisory members for education and training. And, um, it is not on my, um, council plan. However, um, there's, uh, monies in my budget that can be moved around in order to compensate to attend this, uh, conference. I I think it would be a good conference for, um, myself, as I was, uh, voted in as chair for that committee. And, um, I'm going to see also if the, um, Olds Police Advisory Committee will, um, allow the, uh, vice chair to attend with me. I think it's a learning experience. I think we want to start this committee off right. And, um, so I just want, you know, council's approval that I could go to this as I do have monies in my budget that can be moved around in order to compensate for this, uh, conference.
Excellent. Thank you, Counselor Overwater. And I would assume, and this probably is a question for, uh, uh, for Mrs. Lutz, there'd probably be some money in the budget to, uh, because the vice chair is, uh, member-at-large, is that correct?
Yes.
Through Overwater. Um, Mrs. Lutz, would there be a bit of money in the, uh, um, police advisories budget to, uh, send? And I'm assuming, again, it's virtual.
Oh, actually, uh,
Oh.
Your worship, which I find, um, interesting. Now, possibly it may end up becoming virtual. Um, due to whatever COVID circumstances will be, but right now, no, it's hosted in personal, in person at the, um, at Brooks. So
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, CAO.
I'll have Director Linderman correct me if I'm wrong, but I do believe we allocated twenty-five hundred dollars for the policing committee for two thousand and twenty-one.
Yes, we did.
Excellent. Okay. Um, all right, well, um, I think we probably need to get a, uh, uh, projected cost sheet out to council to be able to make that decision properly. Um, we've got a bit of a ti- bit of time if we can have that for uh, maybe our first regular council meeting in February and, and we can, uh, debate and do that. Counselor Blatt. Or actually, Counselor Harper, then Ryan, then Blatt.
Thank you. Actually, my question was an- answered in reference to being a virtual.
Okay. Counselor Ryan.
Uh, thank you, worship. Um, as the other member from council on that, uh, committee uh, had a discussion with Counselor Overwater with regards to this conference, and I thought it would be best if we just set the, uh, the chairman and the vice chair rather than everybody trying to go, unless it goes virtual and, and the cost goes down exponentially. Um, because the, the, the thing is, is that a lot of the, uh, information that's being held at this conference is all about governance and how, and, um, the regulations, rules of, of, uh, how these committees operate. And so would be, it's good information for all the members of the committee to, to have, but, um, as it is right now and doing it in person, it's, it's much more costly to, uh, to send everybody. So it would be good just to send, uh, the chair, the vice chair, and then they can provide all the information to the rest of the committee.
All right, sounds good. Counselor Blatt.
Thank you, worship. I think it's a good idea, and I, I would support it depending upon, of course, the costs and making, providing that we have the availability within budgets, but the one comment I'd like to make to all of us as council, that, um, being that we are in a, um, going into an election year and of course twenty twenty-two will be a brand new or new council members. Perhaps going forward, each and every one of us should be providing some type of a written guideline or, or, and maybe there's information available that, that Counselor, um, Overwater can put forward so that there would be some type of a handbook or information that can be passed on to new members of council. I know that, um, the handbook that's coming forward from MUGS will be a valuable tool for a current council as well as any future councils. So I would just like to state that all of us that are on a committee such as this should perhaps start writing down, you know, references and, and information that could be passed along as educational tools. Just a comment I'd like to make.
Excellent idea, Counselor Blatt. Thank you for making that. Um, all right, so I don't think we need a motion for today, but if you could get us a, a caution sheet and some idea of of what that's going to be, then we can vote on that at that point in time.
Yep, absolutely.
Sound fair?
Yeah.
Right?
Yep.
Okay, if there's nothing else on this issue, we'll move along to item seven E, or six E, sorry, my apologies. Um, uh, the item that I Or six E, sorry, my apologies. Um, uh, the item that I put forward. Um, uh, just before Christmas, uh, Mayor um Rhonda Hunter from Didsbury. Reached out to me and asked if uh there would be any buy-in from the town of Olds to set up a a mayoral caucus. Um, of the region south of Red Deer and north of Erudery. Uh, going east to west as well. Um, she suggested that it be Penhold, Ennisville, Bowden, Olds. Uh, Sunday, Carstairs, Didsbury, uh, uh, Crossfield, Troschu, Three Hills, and Drumheller. And um, we got very informal and and put a Zoom call together as nobody was allowed to travel anyway. So. Again, relatively low cost to to get that out and um we had a phenomenal conversation uh just before. Before Christmas. And then we did have one more meeting uh about a week and a half ago. And uh, the the um caucus seems to be coming together uh quite well. So. I too am uh coming forward to ask for permission to to sit in on more of these meetings. I think it'll be something very fruitful. Um, we do have the Central Alberta Mayor's Caucus, but that encompasses of uh the counties and Red Deer and. Uh, who have, you know, we all have similar issues, but uh. I think this caucus will be a little more laser focused on uh the smaller municipalities up and down the corridor, but uh between Red Deer and and Calgary. Um, I suggested initially that we be called the South Central Alberta Mayor's Caucus until I realized the acronym was SCAM. Uh, so uh, the group uh politely thought that we should be the mayors of Southern Central Alberta. Uh, which does not have scam in the acronym. So um. Uh, I don't think we're going to have, we'll probably have a one to two hour meeting once a month to start. And then once we get up and rolling, probably every second uh Monday or every second week or month, sorry. Uh, and uh, be fairly minimal cost as as I think we'll probably stay virtual. So no travel expenses or anything like that. It'd just be some per diem for uh for myself, a little extra there. Um, again, cost on a two hour uh meetings, a hundred dollars once a month. So it would be certainly less than five hundred dollars. For the rest of the year. So at this point in time, I'd like to ask council if uh for their blessing to continue on with uh. With this group and I can bring the reports back as needed. Councillor Harper, then Blatts. Then Thompson.
Thank you very much, your worship. I do support uh. Your communication with all these other mayors and I think it would be great. Communication is always key, especially at this time. I would like to uh have a more formal report from you after each one of these meetings so that we know. What's being discussed and what's coming up. Or perhaps a request from your worship. As to uh what some of the councillors think is could be a more so central mayor's issue. Or municipalities issue that we could bring forward, that you could bring forward at these meetings.
Absolutely.
I already have a couple that I could think of.
Mayors of South Central, not Central. All right, uh, Councillor Blatts and then Thompson.
I think your worship too. And I would support this because I believe that um. Anytime that we, any educational tools that we can get and anything that will be a benefit. Will be a benefit to all of us. And so I guess if you give us, I would encourage you to give us written reports or reports thereof. What's discussed and if we can have some input and perhaps on occasion, maybe one of the deputy mayors could sit in on one of those meetings as well. If it's going to remain virtual and costs are low.
Excellent. Yeah, I will have a report and reports from council today for uh for the meeting last week and uh certainly be doing a verbal and. And obviously, any any issues that you have, please uh. Fire them at me before and uh once we get dates up and running, I'll I'll take all the issues we possibly can to this uh to this caucus. Uh, Councillor Thompson first, then Overwater, then Bennett.
So your worship, I'm 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 not concerned with with the meeting, but but I am with the process. Um, our council has, you know, our overall budget for honorariums and travel and and things of the nature. Has increased by over a hundred thousand in the last three years. And while this is just another small meeting, uh, you haven't proposed a terms of reference. Or or brought this forward in a in a really formal fashion. So I would I would suggest we we defer discussion until you do so. Uh, it really should be the kind of conversation we have when we review ABCs. And set appointments in the year and prioritize from from my perspective.
Thank you very much, Councillor Thompson. I will be having uh terms of reference and so forth brought forward. Uh, and we can certainly discuss it further there. Councillor Overwater, then Bennett.
Thank you, worship. Um, I I think this is a great idea because uh we do belong to Cape. However, um. That sometimes can become Red Deer centric. And I think uh having the smaller urban communities discuss what their economic issues are and and the other issues. Um, within their communities, I think is a great idea. And I would also like to state that the uh the council budget really um was not um. There were there were numbers that were not inputted properly into uh the whole budget. So. Our budget has not increased by a hundred thousand. It was just numbers that had not been uh inputted properly into the budget. So. I I I don't want to give the public and a and an idea that we have increased the budget by a hundred thousand because. All council were on the same page as to what was being put into our uh plans in our per diems. It's just that it wasn't inputted properly. Thank you.
You. Uh, Councillor Bennett, then Blatts, then Thompson.
Thank you, worship. I just would like to say that we usually add in ad hoc um committee monies. So that when these these particular committees come up, uh, we are able to attend to them. And that is why it's specified for unallocated. And I believe this group would be closer to um what we're all interested in as communities probably of under ten thousand. And Red Deer does become Red Deer centric way too often. And Red Deer County, I'm not sure if they're involved either, but they become. Too red county centric and uh they run the show rather than the voices of these communities being heard.
Yeah. No, this would um definitely be just the small urbans. There's no uh, no counties involved in this group. So. I think laser focusing, the laser focusing the the issue.
Of this and it will follow process when both when you bring back the anticipated budget.
Excellent. Thank you. Councillor Blatts.
Thank you, worship. Um, basically, I'm just going to reiterate exactly what Councillor Bennett just said. We do have an unallocated. Uh, budget portion that could probably be well utilized. And you would not even go in excess of your current budget. And you know, as the process has been through the last three or four meetings and and as we have counsel. Have all sat around and discussed our budgets. I mean, I think we're very cognizant and have been very conscientious in what we input and how we. Have maintained our budgets and and I believe that what councillor Overwater was trying to say is that. Our um budgets have now been brought into line with actuals and. I think that we're on the right track now and we are going to be recording them and reporting them back to the general public on a quarterly basis. Thanks to Director Linderman. So I think that we will be fine. And I I truly believe that we should be supporting this. And I understand that perhaps councillor Thompson's not really been familiar with all of the process, but he has sat around and watched us. Discuss our budgets and how we are um doing and maintaining our monthly. Uh, honorary and remuneration costs. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Blatts, Councillor Thompson, then Harper.
Uh, yes, uh, through yourself, your worship, to Director Linderman. Uh, Director Linderman, could you share the budget to actual expenses for council? As it pertains to honorarium, per diem, travel and subsistence over the last three years?
Not.
I don't have that right at my fingertips right now, but I can definitely bring that back.
Thank you.
Councillor Harper.
Thank you very much, your worship. I I uh do appreciate Mr. Councillor Thompson's discussion about. Believing that uh council budget has gone up over a hundred thousand. Um, and I believe that both councillor Blatts and councillor Overwater have. Totally indicated the reality of that where it wasn't being inputted correctly. The other party is over the last four years. Council has spent considerable amount of time in meetings. We've had a new MGA. We've also had as part of council budget. Uh. A by-election that's also attributed to council. We've had many, many meetings that uh have come forward over the last three and a half years. And I feel that. Once again, a communication with mayors like ma- mayors within our area is just a very favorable. Uh, item for our mayor to meet virtually with mayors uh in our other areas. So we can, it could be a win-win situation. I I'm and through you, um. Uh, your worship, I'd like to know if that mayor's north. Includes the Reeves of Counties and City of Red Deer. If we actually have. A terms of reference for that particular um committee. Because I don't believe we do.
Yeah, that's Central Alberta's mayor's caucus is is very informal. There are no terms of reference there. Um, I will uh push this group to to um set up a formal um terms of reference and so forth so that we uh. Uh, we can all ratify it within our own budgets. Uh, the individual urbans. Um, can do the do the same as as what you're requesting here. So, um, councillor Thompson.
To worship. I'll uh I'll stop harping on the on the issue. I just wanted to to make sure we were clear that it wasn't a. A staff input error that has put council over budget. Um, it's a process and and that's really what I'm speaking to. These types of things who come forward with a proper process so they can be reviewed and and decided on.
Well, I think councillor Harper hit the nail on the head. We have had so many uh things crop up over the over this entire mandate that uh. Weren't anticipated. Um, just the housekeeping alone on the MGA has been uh onerous. Uh, and then you couple a few old specific items that have uh reared their head over the last. Two years or so um has blown our budget, has blown our budget up and um. Uh, certainly very, very uh intense issues that this council needs to take care of for the betterment of our town. Um, councillor Ryan, then back to councillor Blatts.
Uh, thank you, uh, your worship. Um, yeah, I think we've got a little off topic here, uh, talking about the budgets because. Uh, as far as I'm concerned, um, you have a budget, you have unallocated in your budget. This isn't going to even uh put a dent really that much into your unallocated. And therefore, uh, I don't see a big issue with it. The budget is already, the budgets have already been approved. And um, I I don't even understand why we're delving into all of this uh when when you already have the money there in your budget. So. Uh, I think that uh if you get a terms of reference, that's great. I also just think that even talking informally is a is a really good idea. One of the biggest benefits we have going to the AMA. Is speaking to our fellow uh councillors and other towns and um we learn a heck of a lot just from the informal discussions we have around the table and around the room. Uh, in going to our educational sessions again, uh, at the, we're always sharing information. We always are learning. Uh, it would bring all that information back to to the town and it's always a benefit to 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 know more than to know less. So I think uh in this case, it's a, if you're learning something from other mayors and you bring that back to us, then that's a benefit to our town.
Absolutely.
Have the opportunity to take your issues as well to that group as well.
Yes.
Uh, I believe councillor Blatts had her hand up.
Thank you, worship. Thank you. I was going to um make a similar comment to what councillor Ryan has just made. I don't think this is a time or place to be discussing the our budgets at all. I mean, you do have the unallocated as indicated and. I want to correct councillor Thompson. He's been part of all of this process. That we started back in the fall, particularly in regards to our budget. And we do, we have been very diligent as council. We're not willy-nilly running around making. Decisions. And myself, I've indicated several times, I follow my own personal budget, what I submitted. And I knew exactly where I was throughout the whole process. And I did bring back to council the one time that I knew I was going over. And it was discussed at that point in time prior to councillor Thompson being elected. So. I just want to say that that's the final comment and I think it's time to uh call the vote, Miss, your worship.
Well, I don't think, uh, as I do have the allo- unallocated um uh portion on my budget, I don't think I need a motion to go forward with that. I will bring terms of reference and uh if this committee keeps uh. Um, bearing the fruit that I've seen so far, um, then we'll talk about putting it on the organizational list of the. Uh, in October. Councillor Overwater.
Thank you, worship. Yeah, I I would hate to see that get too formalized. Because as councillor Ryan and every all the other councillors have stated that. You know, we get so much information from when we're networking with other municipalities and um. You know, rather than sitting in a structured meeting. So I think roundtable discussions for this type of um. Uh, committee is is going to be very beneficial to all of the communities that belong. So. You know, I I don't want to see it get, you know, overly formalized because then you're going to lose the networking part of it and. And you've got money in your budget, unallocated. I don't think it needs to come back to us.
Absolutely. Thank you so much, Councillor Overwater. Councillor Bennett.
Yes, I just want to reiterate that part of the process is specified as it is unallocated and. We each have that in our budget. So I do not think that you worry, Mayor Mizichka. Just carry on.
Excellent. All right. Well, that is item six E. So let's move along to uh. Reports from councils, boards and committees. Um, I'm going to go around my screen, so I'm going to ask councillor Overwater to start. And I know everybody's screen's a little bit different, but um we'll just make a loop and.
You want the motion first, uh, your worship? Okay, yes. I moved the reports from council authorities, boards, committees and commissions ending January twenty fifth, twenty one, BBC for information. I did, as um along with all the other councillors, sent in, send in a written report. And um, again, I'm just, I I'm pleased that uh I was voted in as chair for the police advisory. I've been an advocate for eight years on this. And I'm so glad to see it come to fruition. It was one of my um standing points when I first got on council in two thousand thirteen. So. It's here and we're all very excited. We have a amazing people on that uh committee. I think councillor Ryan and I and and. Councillor Thompson was there as well. I think we were very pleased and um happy with the uh the people that are sitting around the table and I think this committee is good. And be awesome. So also, um, I attended, oh, and I just want to say kudos to uh Mrs. Lutz. She is our facilitator and our staff support person. She is amazing. She's keeping us on track and. We're busy going through the policies, uh, the vice chair, Marnie Williams and myself and and uh Mrs. Lutz have been going through that so that. Our next meeting, February eleventh, we will be able to present that to our committee and go forward. So. Uh, we're, we are just all, everybody's really excited on that board. I attended the MPC uh meeting. We approved um. A seat count at seventeen Imperial Close. We approved a drive-through sit-down resident uh with some conditions at fifty-six, twenty-nine, forty-sixth street, which is across from. Uh, the uh brick building, the old Shell gas station. There is a liquor store in there so that uh that car wash in the back is going to be turned into a drive-through. We approved a dog grooming business at twenty-one Hawthorne Crescent and our December permits were slow, only at about forty thousand. However, yearly compared stats from. Twenty nineteen at thirty-three point three million, uh, at the end of twenty twenty, we were thirty point one million. So. With all of COVID, I believe that uh, you know, the town, you know, was still doing okay. Uh, the Waste Commission, we received a contract from an oil cleanup company while cleaning up the site. Found an old waste landfill, which I'm sure there's many around this whole uh county and mountain. Found an old waste landfill, which I'm sure there's many around this whole uh county and mountain view. However, the tonnage came in just under seven thousand tons at ninety-five dollars a ton. So you can see it was just under seven hundred thousand dollar revenue for the uh commission. To put that into perspective, the January average tonnage over the last three years has only been eight hundred and sixty tons. So, and we brought in seven thousand. This, we didn't have to have any more staff, we didn't have any more equipment. Um, our staff there are amazing. They're doing a great job for us. And the money that we get will also be um used to uh build our new supercell, which is probably going to be. Around one point two, one point three million. So this money will go towards that, as we were thinking we were going to have to debenture at least half of it, so. Anyways, um, the commission is doing well. We have money in the bank, we have money in our reserve, we have um. We're more than on track for our closure and post-closure, so um, whatever happens there, we will have money to look after that place for. Fifty years. Thank you.
Excellent news. Thank you very much councillor Overwater. Uh, next on my screen is councillor Ryan.
Wow, I'm not usually uh this high up on the uh, on the list. Gee, that's really cool. Um, yeah, I uh submitted a, a written report. I'm not going to go through it verbatim. Um, you could, you, you know, you can all read it and uh, uh, our legislative clerk has a copy as well as. Um, she has a copy of everybody else's who submitted. Um, I'm just to highlight uh, the, obviously, I was at the uh. Advisory Committee, uh, you know, a meeting, um, as councillor Overwater said, it was very uh, it was very well, um. Well done, uh, you know, so uh excited about uh the backgrounds and everybody, and I think it's going to be a great group moving forward. And uh, the next thing I guess to talk about is the municipal library board. Um, I want to encourage anybody who's uh ever done the Banff uh festival, the Banff Centre Mountain. Well, festival, that's what it's called. Um, who's ever attended that here, obviously, we are not being uh, it's not being done in person, but it is online. Uh, if you buy tickets through the library website, uh, they get a little portion of the money back, and so it continues to be a fundraiser. And the benefit of it being online right now is that, uh, you know, it's running until October, so you can do it anytime. Um, whereas before, the, the films would have been shown in one or two days and in and gone, so uh, that's a really good benefit. Um, and the other thing too, I wanted just to mention would be um, the advocacy, so uh. Somewhat like what we did with the small business, uh, the library had had requests from a few of our patrons with regards to some of the essential services. We operate. One thing was exams, partnering exams for post-secondary school students. Uh, it's um, cost them, well, this one person, individual who um, who came forward as an example was a hundred and fifty dollars. For them to pay for the exam on their own. They did through the library, it would be. Uh, I think was, I think was mentioned ten dollars uh through the library, so it's a big cost savings um for them, especially when they. You know, it's, it's a financial drain. Uh, and also we do offer print services, especially for people who are. You know, applying for government help uh and assistance and they, they um, they're low income, they don't have a computer of their own or a printer of their own. So they come into the library and these are services that we can offer on, on, by appointment only, so. Um, you know, something that we're asking the, the province to allow us to do as a library and I'll be bringing it forward on. To our Parkland Regional Library Executive Committee meeting on Thursday. That's all I got.
Excellent. Thank you councillor Ryan. Uh, next on my screen, I have councillor Blatts.
Thank you, worship. I'm not going to read my report verbatim, as I did send it in, submit it yesterday as well. Um, I just want to touch base quickly on our Red Deer River Municipal Users Group meeting. We did, um, we had a. Very lengthy meeting on Thursday afternoon and there was an awful lot of information came forth very quickly, but touching on deputy minister. Yi from uh Alberta Environment, uh, the list of questions that were asked and the answers that she has given. Will be coming available to me and I will certainly um pass those on to all of council. Um, as you're aware of that, with the coal mining situation now, um, the, they're being reviewed. You know, water is something that we're all very concerned with, and particularly our own water and with the Red Deer River. And as we are not yet at a, a total and one hundred percent complete allocation or licensing. Um, it, we are concerned that that eventually could potentially present a problem, so. Our special committee's been working closely with Minister Nixon to ensure that our crown royalties and rights are in place. And hopefully, we will get some resolution, but um, going forward, any more information that I have in regards to this issue. I will definitely bring forward to all of council. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much councillor Blatts. Um, next on my list, I have councillor Bennett.
Thank you, worship. Um, I too submitted one, I won't read it verbatim either. I just wanted to um thank. Town staff and administration for implementing the eight rinks. I have been around town at all of them and they are generally all busy. And I have to say, I've never witnessed this many people using our trails. It's been phenomenal success. And for the, because we can exercise at fitness centers, families are out together. They're walking dogs, they're walking small children, they're small children and dogs out skating and. It's uh, it makes your heart glad, so I, I appreciate all the effort that's gone into that. Um, I've gone to, uh, attended our various meetings and my season has been quiet. It starts this week, actually. I have Parkland Planning Commission meeting and as well as an Olds Institute meeting.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you councillor Bennett. Next, I have councillor Thompson.
Thank you, worship. Uh, over the last month, I've had the opportunity to participate in the municipal planning commission. And the Olds Policing Advisory Committee meeting. Now, both of these meetings have already been reported on, so I won't go too much further. I did, however, have an opportunity to take the elected official training through Alberta Emergency Management Agency. And um, it's nice to have that done, as I believe it's something required for our emergency management committee uh as a community. That's it, sir.
Excellent. Thank you councillor Harper.
Thank you very much, your worship. I did uh submit a written report to, to all of council, just a couple of highlights. Repair costs on the waterline break that occurred in November, this Water Commission report have yet to be finalized. And we expect uh to hear the full results of why and how the waterline broke um back in November. We are, have passed a borrowing bylaw to um make up the shortfall of the three point four million dollars. That has not been provided in grants from the province for the last twinning project from Ditzberge to Crossfield. And we are asking, uh, we'll be sending a letter to our member mayors, asking their support signers. Uh, in reference to supporting our grant application for that uh shortfall of funding. In reference to the chamber, uh, we are now in the process of uh planning for the annual general meeting for March. The date's uh yet to be set, but it will be held virtually through Zoom. And of course, intermunicipal cooperation committee, we had our annual meeting in December. And we have already passed the amendments as requested for that particular uh committee. And the other reports uh MPC and that have already been reported on. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you councillor Harper. Um, I too uh attended many uh, many of the things that were discussed uh previously. Uh, of course, the new one is the uh mayors of South Central Alberta, the M S C A. Uh, the new committee that uh, that we just had a, a robust discussion on. Um, much of it, of course, uh centered around um COVID and um. Uh, what some of the things where uh the individual municipalities are doing. Um, and, and much of it around uh writing a, a letter of support for small businesses in our communities. Um, uh, so I have uh got a couple of templates that uh, that we have come up with or that. The various mayors in this caucus have come up with, so I'll share that with council uh this afternoon. And um, we'll get it into an agenda package so that everybody can see that's uh what's going on there, so. Uh, now that I have a bit of a mandate to do that, uh, to sit on that committee, I'm sure. Um, there's many other things that we'll be uh discussing. We touched on topics of policing and, and healthcare and. And the challenges between having uh, uh, the divide is, is right between us, between the Red Deer um. Uh, region of Alberta Health Services and the Calgary region, so we're comparing notes on uh. Um, the different hospitals in, in the north as opposed to the south of that particular caucus. So uh, actually, it's going to be very fruitful that way, as hopefully maybe we can harmonize councillor Ryan, a bit of. Uh, that thinking between the Calgary region and the Ca- and the Red Deer region to help out with uh seniors housing and things like that. That you take care of, so. Um, those are just sort of a bit of the highlights of, of the first meeting and a half or two meetings. We've had at, with that caucus, so. Uh, I will get those uh, the template, letter, template out to everybody for review here this afternoon. And that is my report. So unless there's any questions for anybody around the table, I will call for the vote on the. Motion we have. Councillor Harper.
Thank you very much, your worship. Through you to our legislative clerk. Um, has our legis- legislative clerk been receiving minutes from the various committees and that? Because I, I don't see they're regularly appearing anymore, so do we have to ask our various commissions to start sending those minutes on? And Monica, uh, whereas she might not be there.
Um, councillor Overwater here, we do send in ours. We don't have a meeting every month. I think we're down.
Yeah.
To almost quarterly meetings. Um, I think we only have five now a year and that's because, or, yeah, five. Five meetings a year and uh, one of them is a budget meeting, so our minutes do come every three or four months, so.
And there's a, a note from the legislative clerk. She says uh, she puts forward what she receives. So if, if the minutes on uh your committees aren't, aren't making it into our agenda package, please let's make sure that we get them to. To the legislative clerk, uh, uh, hopefully by Wednesday before the, the council meeting on Monday, that will give her enough time to get it. Into the package and we added the last meeting of the month, so um, if we can do that, that would be fantastic. Alright, we have a motion on the table, so I will uh call for a vote, all in favor. And opposed, and that motion carries. Alright, so that brings us to item nine A. CAO Correspondence and Information.
Thank you, your worship. There are two pieces of correspondence to report on. One is a letter from the mayor of Red Deer. To yourself indicating that she has been appointed as honorary lieutenant colonel by the Canadian Armed Forces for the forty-one. Signal Regiment. And the second piece of correspondence is from a local business owner thanking council for uh waiving the business license fees. That you did in the budget process.
Excellent. Thank you. And of course, uh, on behalf of the town of Olds, I'd like to congratulate uh mayor Tara Vero on her appointment. That's a fantastic uh, uh, achievement for our, our area. Uh, may I have a motion to accept for information, please? Councillor Blatts.
Thank you, worship. I will move that we accept the um correspondence and information report ending January twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-one. Uh, for information.
Excellent. Comments, questions, concerns? Seeing none, no, call for a vote, all in favor and opposed. Motion is carried and that brings us to adjournment. Who would like their name on the adjourn? Whoa, slow down. CAO.
Yeah, I just want to thank.
Not going to talk about the Maybellies, are you?
Not, not at all. I just want to thank um director Andrew for joining us after he was dealing with an incident. So he did come back as soon as he possibly could. And also director Linderman was thanked by that individual as well, as uh. As she indicated, not often finance gets a uh kudo, so.
Yes.
Kudo. Yes, we've got, absolutely have to thank director Linderman for all her hard work through that. I hope all went well. Director Andrews, I keep uh wanting to call you chief, but. I'm not sure which one's more important to our community, but uh, thank you for uh being out there on an ugly, ugly morning. To battle something.
Well, we only had six incidents uh today in county.
Low jeepers.
Of course, it has to happen on the coldest days of the year, so. Alright, who would like the, the adjournment?
Sure.
Uh, councillor Bennett will put on. Thank you very much. And uh, we'll see everybody at P and P next Monday.
Sure. Thank you.